Okay, I'm gonna start though. Calling to order on Monday in the 28th, 2025 budget work session of the Berkeley City Council. Ms. Mitchell, please call the call.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Black. Mayor Potem Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Hunnen.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Valani.
Here.
Mayor Dean.
Here. Our first order of business is the approvals tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
To move.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Mayor Potem Gavin. Any changes or additions? Didn't think so. Ms. Mitchell, please call the call.
Gavin.
Yes.
Hunnen.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Valani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. Tonight's agenda has been approved. Please stand for the pleasure of this.
I have to hear it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No public here, so I'm not even gonna open unless anybody wanna... Okay. So, would be none. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number one on tonight's agenda.
Presentation, manner of receiving a presentation summarizing the proposed fiscal year 2025-26 budget.
Please read item number two.
Budget work session, manner of a discussion of the proposed fiscal year 25-26 city of Berkeley budget. A, city clerk. B, information technology. C, city manager. D, city council. E, city attorney. F, CDBG fund. G, human resources. H, building and planning. I, communications. J, library. K, finance and treasury.
Thank you. So, before I toss this to Crystal, she and Carl will give us an overview this evening. Decorum would dictate that questions come through the chair. I'm doing what decorum tonight. So, if you have questions, you'll just mm and ask them directly. I don't know if you want to wait for each section. You decide when you wanna take questions?
Yeah, we can... We can... I'll kinda give a breakdown of how we're going to go through it and then how the questions can be...
Perfect. I'll take it away.
Good evening, everybody. So, this is my first budget, Amy's first budget, Carl's second budget, but...
Here.
Fourth budget. Yeah, yeah. So, it's been... I've been here now for five months, Amy just about the same. So, candidly, it would be nice to start this process a little bit earlier, especially when we're talking about the capital improvement process, and so you'll see that next year. But I'm just really proud of all of the departments and how the finance department came together and their team is newly formed but came together pretty quickly. And I think everyone has come together to collaborate to bring this budget forward. I think every year for this year, we provided the budget document, which Caitlin and Amy did a wonderful job at putting together. We... It's still... I'll still... I say it's a work in progress, but I don't want to diminish the fact that it's a beautiful document and we think it really captures what we were trying... The story that we were trying to tell and the way that we were trying to tell it. That said, we are always... We're already kind of noting things for improvement, things that we'd like to add for next year when more... When we've had more time as well. But just kudos to everybody involved. Amy's working her butt off, so is Carl, and so have all the departments. So, it's just been a great process. That said, tonight, just to set the stage, what your agenda does and shows, we're gonna give an overview first, not just gonna dive right into the clerk's office. It will put our schedule off a little bit, so I apologize, but we kind of built in... We don't think that each of these departments is even going to take a half an hour. CDBG is a good example. Our budget is a good city manager department, I think is a good example. So, I don't think that this will put us off too much on timing. As to the mayor's question, I think it probably... We're gonna do an overview first, and then I think if you have questions about the overview, put them forward then, and then we'll go through each department. One thing I'd like to note is that this is night one of two nights. We did that so that it breaks it up a little bit, but tonight's very largely the general fund. So, I know Greg had quite a few questions that were... That I said, oh, hey, we'll get to these tomorrow. Because tonight, all of the departments, for the most part, sit in the general fund. And then tomorrow night, just by the very nature of it being public works, parks and recreation, then we'll start to talk about the other funds, and we'll dive into the projects and CIP as well. So, tomorrow night at the very end, you may have more questions if you don't feel that we covered something. But we are trying to give... Tell the story, give a higher up kind of where... How we got here, why we got here. And largely, what we're looking at is you guys passed a two-year budget last year. So, you passed... The second year was 25-26. What we're looking at largely today and tomorrow is, since you already passed the budget for 25-26, what changed about 25-26 from what we're recommending this year from what you guys already passed last year? And we're asking for a three-year budget. So, there's two additional years from that. We'll focus largely on 25-26 because the next two years are proposed. That doesn't mean we can't answer questions about that, but we really focused on this next year.
And before you leave there, too, the state only allows you to officially adopt one year. So, even though we have the three years, that's why if you read the resolution, it says, "Adopt the one year and adopt the proposed year two and three." So, there's no legal standing for it, but as Nate pointed out, and as Crystal's... They proposed it up, looking at as long as you can, you know, that is just helpful in the grand scheme of life to figure out, you know, what's it look like, not just in year one, year two.
Yeah, even if it is our best guess.
Yeah, exactly.
Especially in these times. Okay, so that said, we'll break into the overview. This is just a quick, I think you guys know, overview of city clerk, all the departments. And we'll end on finance and treasury, and then we'll pick up tomorrow on the other departments.
I thought you were gonna say a breakout into song. I was all ready.
Oh, next year.
Okay, cool.
This same requires the majority vote.
Berkeley Budget, the musical.
I thought you guys were like the... You guys are gonna break out. Okay, so we're gonna start off with talking a little bit about really our challenges and opportunities, but to talk about taxable value versus assessed value. And Carl, you and I will just... We'll be on here. What we really wanted to show the story of or tell the story of is our taxable value and its story through the years, but also in comparison to assessed value. So, if you're familiar with proposal A and the headly override amendment, Carl can tell us in a much more... In a much more eloquent way, but basically, we're limited in how much our taxable value can grow. So, if there was no limit on taxable value, our taxable value would just be assessed value. So, as market... As the market values of homes go up, they would be paying that much in taxes. But they are capped, and Carl, if you'd like to expound... And my... If you'd like to expound on that, feel free.
Certainly. So, it's important to understand the difference between the two because there's a general feel out there of tariffs and inflation and everything else that maybe a recession's coming and blah, blah, blah. And, you know, geez, you're budgeting increases in taxable value. Are we safe doing that? Should we be more conservative, et cetera? So, the key to take away from this, the orange is where we are as of right now. And so, that basically is on an annual basis, proposal A said, you get the lesser of 5% or inflation every single year on your taxable value, and that's what we levy our millage on, and that's what taxpayers pay their property tax bills on an annual basis. And so, for 2024, that was about $822 million. The... As Crystal pointed out, the assessed value is supposed to be the value of the... You know, 50% of the value of the house. And in the eighties, if everybody, if you recall, property values were skyrocketing 10-50% a year. People were being, you know, the lesser income people, the elderly, were being priced out of their house because they couldn't afford their taxes. So, that's what prompted proposal A, and if there was no proposal A, we would be at the blue. So, in order for us to not see an inflationary increase each and every year, so inflation last two years was 5%, and this coming year, for the year that budget said, is 3.1%. In order for us not to receive that inflationary increase, even if things go bad, say the housing stock crashes and goes down 10%, we would still receive inflation until the blue line and the orange line met each other. So, there's a 30% gap between the two, which is why every single year, our mills seem to get rolled back. You know, that's just the mechanism for making sure that you only pay inflation. But literally, we'd have to see the assessed values fall more than 30% for us to not receive our inflationary. So, again, a great number, a sad number, because we could've had all that extra money. But as far as comfort goes with our estimates for property taxes, you should be very comfortable that what we have estimated, we will realize, especially in the short term, is, you know, it'd have to be catastrophic event for us to not, you know.
I would just add a little bit there, too. The housing crisis, what the housing crisis did do to our taxable values is sad as well because we would be higher in taxable values had that not happened. If you look here at our past years, we were at... We started to take...
I don't think it's on.
No, I missed the year. Goes back to '08. This is... 14 was actually, I think, when we started this comeback up. So, but before this, if we had all the years up, which I'm sorry that we don't, you saw when the recession hit, our taxable value did drop very low. And so, it took us a few years to come back up. I will say, though, comparatively, in Oak Park, Oak Park just last year got back to the taxable value that they were at in 2008. So, that's why it's so important to have a community that is attractive to people to live in because your investment is much more soundier than it is in the community. And I think Oak Park has done a lot of work to come out of that. But that was a direct... You know, people talk about some of these are intangible things that we provide, and that's why housing values stay higher here than they did in other communities. But that's just to note. Next is just a continuation of that conversation. We are limited in the fact that as our taxable value has gone up, our abilities have rolled back. So, our operating, which includes one of the headly override for public safety as well, right?
Correct.
Okay. Then what's the public... Sorry, what's public safety?
Well, we have a general... The public safety is the three mills, the police and fire.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and then the operating is the override and the...
Okay. And the voted.
And the voted.
So, 10 mills is what the voters originally said for operating. That has now been rolled back to 7.7468. I know you guys have all had this conversation because when you went to the voters to ask to fill this back up, this is the whole argument. So, we are at 30% of what our original as far as mills go. Our infrastructure's already gone down almost 10%. Solid waste is down by 50%. That original public safety down by 50%. So, it's just the continuation of the story that Carl was just telling, that we have limitations that keep us... Keep our... The revenue that we bring in in property taxes keeps it limited. And that is paired with the costs that we are all experiencing, which is inflationary costs of projects that went up during COVID and haven't really... Will never really go back down from there. Rising healthcare costs, and then our budgeted coal raises. So, we're in union negotiations right now. You know, we were just talking about it in our closed session. Our raises are very much dictated by the negotiations. I know there was a question about how our wages have gone over the years, and it's largely dictated by our union negotiation. So, even our mayor employees tend to mirror our maiden employees, so the raises that they receive. And so, and in order to retain and keep talent, it's necessary, too. Okay, so, this is to look at... Looking at our current fiscal year. So, I just wanted to touch on this really quick, how we are ending this year versus how we thought we were gonna end this year. So, if you look at what you originally passed for 24-25 versus the estimated... A quick note here, the budget report, the line item that you have, is only going to show you the 24-25 amended. It does not include estimated. We have an amendment coming up on this next... On this next council meeting, actually, and then we'll have a fourth amendment, a fourth quarter amendment. But we have estimated what the year end is, and when I say "we," I mean these two have. And that's what's in here. And we feel pretty good about that. We're at a point in this year where we can understand much more clearly what we're going to spend and what we're going to... And the revenue that's going to come in. Do you have any initial thoughts?
It's very minimal things, and if you are curious as to what it is, just let me know. Literally, the amendment on next... A week from today's agenda will make Maya, the estimated column, match our...
Yeah, we just wanted to note, because when you're looking in here, the estimated is not going to match identical. Most of it will, but not identically to the line item amended for this year.
It's big enough that it was important to incorporate it. I like to try to get the two to match, but...
Of course you do.
Yeah, that's what we do. But, yeah, it is there. And remember, the budget act says projected. It doesn't say what your amended budget is, that's how it's supposed to be projected.
So, if you wanna follow along, I wanted to keep up with you guys, the page numbers, just so you... If you were interested, but on page 35 of this document shows our estimated year end for the general fund. And page 75 on the line item will also show you the amended versus council approved. So, where we thought we were gonna end this year in revenue was 15... 15.6 million, 15,569,900. I wish I had a... Here's where we thought we were gonna end in revenue, and...
Well, again, that was our original budget for last year's budget document.
Original, when you passed it. Here's where we are ending in revenue. Similarly, we thought we were just gonna net zero. This is how much we thought we'd spend. This is how much we're spending. So, what changed? Largely, most of this is due to the HVAC print that was just moved. So, that's 1.4 million of it. That's the biggest chunk of this. Other than that, there are little things, and then there's also, we're seeing 500,000 in property tax revenue more than what we had originally estimated. So, Carl tends to budget conservatively, which is good and smart. So, we hope to see this every year, that we bring a little more revenue than we originally anticipated. Similarly, with expenditures, most of it is that HVAC project, but there are also amendments throughout the year that came to you guys and you guys approved. And then also, the end of this year, and we'll get into this a little bit more, but this is a little bit of a teaser of it. We are taking $315,000 from this year and moving it into a public improvement fund. So, a little bit more on that, but we're gonna hold our fund balance. The end of this year is 4.5 million. We're planning on just holding steady on that fund balance for a while, and any surplus, we're putting into the public improvement fund. So, that starts this year. And then for this upcoming year, so fiscal year 25-26, what you guys will be adopting this year, again, last year, you proposed... You adopted a proposed budget for 25-26, and there's going to be a difference there. So, that's where we wanted to make sure you had the line item detail that showed you your proposed budget from last year. And that's going to be on... Also on page 75 of the line item and 35 of the budget document. But we are... We'd originally... Or you guys said originally, because I wasn't here at the time. For next... For this upcoming year, said 15.3 million. We are now saying, and this is revenue, we are now saying 16.1 million in revenue. Largely, that is... There are some small things in here, but largely, that is 377,000 more in property taxes than we initially... That we're now estimating for next year. And then 150,000 additional in marijuana license revenue. How's that 150 additional? How did that... We get that number?
Certainly, I call it the lead revenue sharing program in the state of Michigan. So, for every retail license that's issued...
Yes.
The state collects all of the fees and then divvies it up based on all of them throughout the entire state. That current rate is about 70,000 per license.
Okay.
So, we've got our current year check. It comes in April, I believe, beginning of April. It was $291,000 this year. So, four retail licenses that were out there, 291. So, last year, we had estimated, again, it was...
It was about 60K last year, yeah.
Yeah, it was 60K for two of them. And so, again, conservatively said, well, maybe they'll open, maybe they won't. We estimated 150. Now, we're... We already know those are open, so unless they close, we can expect somewhere around 300,000. That's the extra one.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but the state every year is still kind of a guesstimate because it's really whatever revenue they bring in from the sales.
Yes, if everybody stops smoking.
The more products out there, the more revenue. Yeah.
We have five licenses from now or only four?
We have five.
For the end of last year, we got paid on four.
But we have five licenses this year.
Yes.
They have licenses.
Yes, yeah.
If one of them does close, as long as they're open one day in the fiscal year, do we get the whole of them? My understanding. Because it's... There's a day at which they measure, so I'm not sure.
You call it accounting.
Exactly.
Thank you. So, again, we're going to... We are suggesting that the 25-26 budget ends with the same fund balance as this year, which will put us at 28%. Our target is 20 to 30? Our target is 20 to 30. Our lowest... Or I'm sorry, 25 to 30. Sorry. Lowest is 20, highest is 40. So, that's the policy right now. We feel comfortable in this. It would cover us for several months of expenditures.
Five to 15 is the minimum. Fifteen is two months worth of expenditures. Never wanna go below that because then you start putting in the actual issues there.
So, we feel solid about it, and we think the better strategy now is to hold it where it is and start putting money into public improvement.
So, on that point, I know obviously putting more money into the public improvement fund, presumably expenditures and revenues will blow up, you know, year over year. At some point, we're gonna start to get down further on that percentage. I know 25 to 35 is what our policy is. How many years or what do you expect in terms of when we get to that 25%? Holding it at that 4%?
Yeah. So, the next three years, I was looking at this earlier, our next three years is still about 24 points. I have it in here somewhere. It's 24-25% still on year three of expenditures if expenditures are where we think. But you're right, there is going to be a point where we'll want to add some more money into the fund balance to keep it at that rate.
Yeah, because I think what we're required to then, according to the policy, then next, over two years after it's below a certain...
Yeah, after 20% then we have, yeah. So, we can bring it down. Policy-wise, we can get it to 20% if we wanted to, but that's where we'll have to talk about strategy and what we feel comfortable with doing versus, you know, how much is in the public improvement fund versus how much we have in our general, you know, rainy day fund.
And real quick on the strategy, it's get to our target, you know, which is where we are now, and then the surplus at the end of the year, what do we end up doing with it? You know, so it can easily fall to fund balance. In this case here, what we opted to do is start looking to fund fire trucks.
Yes.
To look towards, we got some facility study that says we need a facility balance. You know, those kind of things. So, rather than having it fall to a fund balance, set it aside, and then annually, it'll be brought to you to say, of the money we got set aside, here are our priorities, here's what we want, and ultimately, you'll approve it as well. The good is, is there's no legal restrictions at all. So, at any time, if we get in trouble, it could be shifted right back with the violations whatsoever.
Thank you. So, you'll notice in the budget for the next three years, we are suggesting $250,000 into that public improvement fund. So, had we not done that, that would've been $250,000 to the fund balance every year. So, what did we spend it on? So, for 25-26, what are we spending it on? This is where we're gonna get into each of the departments. We're gonna look at this on a department level. And we're going to have the departments go through and give their own presentations. What we've asked them to do is to talk about, again, you guys passed a proposed budget for 25-26 last year. So, any of the changes, and then also any highlights from their budget is where we ask them. That's the kind of area we ask them to sit in. But I do want to express that largely what we are trying to do in our expenditures is stick to our strategic framework. So, we're trying to meet the priorities and the objectives that were set in the framework. You guys will get... Our first report is through April 30th. So, because of budget, you'll get a June... The first meeting in June will give our first report. And so, you can kind of see what we've been doing over the last four months. We've been talking, and Councilmember Hunnen and I have been talking about, even when we bring agenda items forward, talking about where they... How they are meeting which objectives, which means it's a good plan. And then also, just to note, I was going to, in our presentation tonight, connect some of the things to these goals. We're kind of getting into specifics. I didn't do it tonight, but the public presentation on the 19th, I will do that. So, we'll point things more towards these priorities. Okay, so our first... Oh, no, I'm sorry, I have one more. This is just a rough representation. Revenues versus our expenditures. You'll see in the budget document, the expenditures have been broken out more than one different way, so you can look at it, you know, salaries and the fringe benefits and things like that. This, I did it here by department just because that's how we're looking at the budget over the next two days. And then our revenues, obviously large, obviously, or maybe not, property taxes, federal grants, charges for service, fines and forfeitures. License and permits is that white sliver, investment earnings, and then other revenue. So, in the line item, you'll see more detail if you want to get into it. But this is also on page 34 of the budget document. And then in the line item, the revenues start on page one in the line item. So, if you're looking at the line item budget, that big one, it starts with revenue and then goes into expenditure. So, you can see each of the revenue line items and kind of how we got there.
I like the graph in the document better, where city council was rounded down to 0%.
I can get to 0%.
I went to two decimal points here. You can think you like Amy more than me. Amy was like, I know. She knew what she was doing. So, now... Housekeeping, actually. Sorry, I keep getting ahead of myself. Housekeeping is, we've added two new funds. So, the opioid settlement fund, we have money going into this. This is, if you guys are familiar, opioid settlement with the pharmacies. So, we've been receiving money for that. We've been talking internally about how we can spend the money. There are limitations on it. We're kind of throwing some things around, but there is a fund for it. It's Fund 248, and I actually did put the page numbers for that one on here. I lied to you. In the budget document, it is... Page 43. And the line item, we'll have to look. And then the public improvement fund is also a new fund. That is on page 40 something. Right over there. And we...
45.
45. And then again, in the line item, I'm not... I apologize for that, not positive. We will talk more about the public improvement fund tomorrow, by the way, because, surprise, the first thing that it's going towards funding is the fire truck, and so that will come with public safety. Then we'll talk about our strategy there. Also, to note, again, just housekeeping, we removed two departments. So, citywide projects and community promotions, thank you. Backing up a little bit, the opioid settlement fund, if you're interested in the line item document, is page 140. 143 for public improvement. So, if you just wanna know that, if you guys are going through. But we removed two departments. This was just for efficiency sake. We thought... There was a lot of things that fell into citywide projects, but there's also a facilities budget now, department. So, it was kind of... There were some things in there that, to us, just didn't make sense. So, what you'll see is community promotions is also gone. We put most of that into communications, but you'll see some of the department budgets have gone up merely because we moved items around. Stan's budget, for instance, went up quite a bit because some things went into his budget that were in here before. And we'll note those things when we get into the departments, just so you guys know. And then, obviously, we added our human resources department. So, there is a human resources department in... Fund in there, and I missed that one. 270. Okay. Victoria, are you ready now?
I'm ready.
For real this time, yes.
So, let's start with the overview before she gets there. So, again, look on page 34. Again, trying to keep everybody focused on where we're at. So, on page 34, under appropriations, the third department down. You can see there, the estimated for clerks in the current year is 329-6. The proposed budget for year one is 346. Yes, she's spending 617,000 more. So, she better tell you on very early, guys. And then you can see it drops back down to 321 to 328 in the out years. So, again, that's the level we're looking at there. So again, that's the level we're looking at there. So as a councilperson, mayor, or whatever, it's, hey, what's the increase? And so hopefully, what you'll see through these presentations and through the departments is, here are the new things, here's what's going up, here's what's going down, here's what's going out of my department, et cetera. But like I said, I just try to keep everybody at the level of, you know, that, that's what we're talking about. So, sorry, Ms. Victoria?
No, that's fine. Okay, thank you. So in that spirit, I'm going to go over the increases, the changes. So regarding elections, I'm asking for the purchase of five new election tablets. We call them line chasers. And that, we incorporated in the November election very successfully. Those were the tablets, I don't know if you saw, when you went to vote, the election worker can go down the line and people can check in with the election worker to make sure that they're in the right spot. And then we can fix that issue right then and there and direct them to the right precinct if they are in the wrong precinct, which did happen quite a few times, as you know, we changed the precincts. So it's been a great tool. We, in November, we used, thank you to Stan and Harrison, who refurbished some old summer camp tablets from Parks and Rec, which worked fine. The main issue is the state of Michigan is requiring Windows 11 now to run a qualified voter file, and these tablets will not be able to be upgraded, so.
So an unfunded mandate.
Yes. So we're looking, we have four precincts and we're asking for five. We always like to have a backup that's ready to be deployed. Also, nominally cost, we need a new sign for precinct three. The previous sign was precinct three and seven, but now three is its own place at the community center. And we may need some temporary signage. I'm having my final meeting with the school district next week to find out. We may have an issue with parking for the November election at the high school, so if we do need to change locations, we'll have to pay for the signage and the mailing to all registered voters. The next change or increase would be clerk's office efficiencies that we're asking for. We're asking for, I'm asking for a software suite, automating city council management, boards and commissions, website, document storage, and FOIA. So to start off with the FOIA request, so this would be software. Right now, we do the entire process from start to finish. Right, we do that ourselves. We've made many great updates, I think, but we can only go so far with, without assistance.
Victoria, if I may, how many FOIA requests have we received so far this year?
So far this year, we've received 46.
That's calendar year.
Calendar year, yes. So in '24, we received 156, and '23, we received 136.
Total for those years.
Total for those years.
And we're already at 46.
And we're already at 46.
How many of them are from just a couple of individuals?
We do a multiple, you know, we, we can get, we have, we have some multiple residents who submit multiple requests and they can go into between 10 and 15 a year apiece.
And we basically can't recoup our costs?
We, so we can.
There's some, some we can, but we really aren't recouping the actual costs.
Correct. So we can bill, we were billing in 30-minute increments, so until someone hit the 30-minute mark, then we start the clock. We did change that to 15 minutes, that's the earliest we can go. A lot of our building, routine building FOIA requests, they don't hit the 15-minute mark, so we're not recouping all our costs.
And the 15 minutes per state law, just to clarify.
Yes, thank you. Yep, yep, so we can't go earlier than that.
Victoria, do you mind if I, to further clarify, an individual can submit several requests, each of them under the 15-minute mark?
Yes, thank you. Yep, that's a great point.
So per request.
Right, right.
And then when you respond and say it's more than 15 minutes, when it gets broken out in 10, usually 115 minutes.
So the FOIA software is great. I mean, it takes the request in, it will disperse it to the correct department, it tracks it, it redacts, it sends reminders to the directors that this is coming due, we need your information. It will track time, it'll create an invoice. It, it just would create many efficiencies for us.
Oh yeah, I mean, no doubt.
Our largest time is reda, in redaction, so we've had FOIA requests where we've spent eight to 10 hours just redacting.
Oh my gosh.
Just think of all the Sharpies you'll save too.
Exactly.
And bring those.
Yeah. So that, that will be key for us.
Thank you.
And then the, we're, I'm also asking for a software suite for Civic Plus. It is for the Civic Plus Agenda and Meeting Management, so that's one portion of it. So that will take care of all of the council needs, that's pre-meeting, during the meeting, and post-meeting. Benefits for us include hosting, storing, and managing all files within one location. It'll solidify the proper formatting to reduce redundant work for us. They will provide customized templates for us that includes minutes, the synopses, CMRs, and they'll create whatever templates that we need. The best part is it will have a flexible and customizable, customizable digital approval workload, so this is great. I had the fortune of sitting with the Oak Park City Clerk, and he went through everything with me, and it's, it's just remarkable that this will, would all be automated. So when the director wants something to go to the packet, you know, they send it automatically. We disperse it to all the directors out there that need to prove it. We can send it to Crystal to approve, get Chris to be approved, Carl to be approved, and the entire process is done digitally. And it also will remind anyone who hasn't signed off to get in, in time to go into the packet. It'll send the reminder and nudge them, and then it pulls it all together and will bill the packet.
I have a question.
Yeah.
With Civic Plus, is that, are there different modules you can get?
There are.
So similar to BSN A?
Yes.
This is this, and you can pick this module.
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
So that's a great, another great thing about this is it does communicate with our Unicode, was Unicode, now it's Civic, Civic Plus, where all of our ordinances and code is stored. So this will actually pull it right from the packet. I know there was, we were discussing some timing issues with getting that online. Some of it was user error on our part, just getting the process going. We were waiting for the mayor to sign the documents, and then we would format it and send it. So this will pull it right from the packet. So as, as soon as we click, like while I'm in the meeting, there'll be a minutes template, and I click that an ordinance is approved in second reading, it will pull it and push, push it onto the website. So that would be a great efficiency, and it takes us out of the equation.
Could this also be used by the planning commission and ZBA for their packet creation?
It could. So I'm, so that's the agenda manager, then I'm also asking for the boards and commissions module, that's on the same price, same price point. So since, you know, the clerk's office is taking over management of the boards and commissions, so it will, it does everything from taking the applications to doing agendas, minutes, and then we could add PC and ZBA to that as well. That's a portion of that.
Fantastic.
There also a, there are benefits for the public too, because there's going to, there would be a meeting calendar on the clerk, so I know that function has been removed, but now they'll see the calendar. I know we've had people call, they like to click and get everything. And there would be unlimited document storage, which is something that I'm very passionate about. So every, I don't know if you go to other communities' websites, they have every council agenda packet from, we could, it'll be starting at the current point, and we can also backload it, so we can start putting in all the prior council packets. So everyone, the public, you guys, anyone, staff, everyone can just go in to any packet they want and find the documents that they'd like. And, so we don't have the space now in our current website to do that.
If we change vendors in the future, do the links to those die, or can we?
That's a good question. I will find out the answer to that.
And if you want to see it in action, if you go to, if you just Google Oak Park Mucode and go to ours, so when you go into mucode for us, you just see our code of ordinances. If you go to Oak Parks, there's two things, and there's documents, and there's code of ordinances. You go to the documents, you'll, you can pick all of the, you know, planning commission, city council, if you go into city council, you can see like, like Victoria said, it'll go, I think theirs go down to like 2,000, and you can go to get the packets. So it's nice.
It also creates an ADD compliant pack, council package, that's great. So it automatically will put that on the website for anyone who needs assistance with the packet. And it has a search function for everyone, public, staff, anyone who would like to use it. So it's, it's really a great package. It would be a huge help for us. I mean, we spend a majority of our time with council management, as far as all the documents that go into it, that come out of it, and then the minute taking.
And we should note that you'll see, if you go back to page 34 on the budget document, you'll see that that uptick from, for one year for this next year is because there's an initial cost, and then that drops off. So there's an initial cost of 25,000 that is just one year to kick it out, and then there's the maintenance cost every other year after that. But that's why you see such a variation.
Do we have a planned go-live? Assuming this were to move forward, we have a go-live date, is it easy to transition to?
It's very, it's a transition to. Yeah, so they'll work with us, they, part of us is providing training, and then they'll give us basic templates, we'll work with, and then they work with us to keep creating templates.
So just, because I love this stuff, when, around when would we imagine having that in operations here in the city?
They have a couple packages they sent, one package, you know, it could be right up, but I would anticipate within 30 to 45 days.
Of the, of the fiscal year?
Yes.
Yeah, of course. Cool.
Yeah, it's very exciting.
My PDS going all the way back to 2001 if it heals.
Do you? Okay.
It's covered.
Are you good?
Yeah.
Okay. Because we were going to speak to it.
And it also will give us a great platform too. I know we worked, we were on Google Drive, and then, you know, we've been trying to test out, how can we all share information, you know, for the packet? So you, you will also have your own portal onto the Civic Plus platform, so that will help as well. And then the other additions are just administrative changes, as Carol spoke to previously, he's went through and just cleaned up some of our accounts. So the one thing that jumps out is stationary every year, you know, there's about $10,000 in there. That is actually all of my paper products for elections.
Three years.
Yeah, exactly. It is not pens and post-it notes, it's all, it's just election-related, so Carl Epley created an account, election supplies, because that's all that that is, so administrative changes.
And also, and sorry, Victoria, what I forgot to note when we were talking about citywide, we got rid of citywide projects, and in citywide projects, everyone in city halls, like office supplies were in one budget. That everybody came to Charlie and said, I need pens, we now put it in everyone else's budget. So you will see a little bit of an increase in each department's budget line item because we did this, so they can all.
For their own pens.
Yes.
Right, right.
Yes.
I know this isn't Civic Plus hour, maybe it is.
Yeah.
Going back, I'm hoping it can get us the packets on time, and then perhaps even a draft earlier of, you know, these are the things we know for sure, and it might be changes, but we can start reviewing.
And we did ask about that, and we can. So we could have a preliminary packet, and then it'll override with the final packet, so that would address that as well, because I know that's been a void since we quit using Drive, that you're unable to see a lot of the documents beforehand.
Any other questions, folks?
So while IT is getting ready, again, stationary, that just drove me nuts last year, is an air department. So what you'll see are operating supplies, there's operating expenses, operating supplies, i.e., or there, I'm sorry, office supplies, operating supplies. So office supplies, pen, paper, pencils, you know, blah, blah, blah. Operating supplies, those are things that are not capital, but necessary to perform your, your work, those kind of things. You'll also see in some of the funds, we got into capital outlay. Capital outlay by definition is anything more than five grand. We had a whole bunch of crap, that's an accounting term, sorry, stuff in capital outlay accounts that was not capital outlay by definition. So that was moved out of capital up into operating supplies, because what we wanted is capital outlay accounts to match the CIP, and hopefully you'll see that throughout the document. So we've double and triple checked, and again, that is the goal, because if it meets the definition of capital, it should be on our capital list. And again, you'll see other stuff as well, but just know that we continue to try to clean it up. And with that, I'll see.
Good evening, everybody. My budget is probably one of the drastic changes due to the citywide projects being eliminated. So they decided to put the mailing machine, the copier, all the desk phone circuits, all our driver circuits and services.
He was so happy.
Exactly.
He appreciates it all, so.
Well, it will simplify things. I can tell you all the, the last bullet point, the GF cell phone, the general fund cell phones, the spreadsheet was getting rather large as far as the breakdowns and everything. It would take, probably to reconcile the bill, probably 30 to 45 minutes each month, so it's a big cost savings as far as just time to break those down. Of course, my lovely software subscriptions will never go down because everything's a big money grab now, and with the Windows 11 deadline coming in October, that they want even more money. So my software subscription will increase. Of course, there'll be continued cybersecurity upgrades, next couple of years will be computer replacements, firewall updates, all that kind of stuff. Computer replacements are going to be in the next couple fiscal years, I broke them over two, so one fiscal year doesn't take a huge hit. I'm trying to buy relatively the same model in the calendar year instead of the fiscal year, so that'll make things a little bit easier, and then we have the upcoming server replacements. But the main changes for my budget is, is basically the citywide projects, everything being dumped into my budget, so.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you.
And to, Amy said this, but it might have gotten lost, what was being looked at was like, who's paying the bill and where is it coming from? You know, kind of streamlining that process. But to Stan's point, it does make it look like you're spending a large amount of money more than.
Let me guess how low your budget is now?
I don't see it on page 34. So on page 35, under information technology, in the middle of the page, under library between communications, the estimated for current year is 299.7, the year one is 348, and then you see it jumps to 430 and 458, that's the purchase of the laptops.
And a server replacement.
Yeah, the server.
Yeah.
I love you're looking for the department.
That's not on my page.
Yeah, all of the general fund is just on 34 and 35, so that makes it easier.
So he goes under recreation and culture?
I was just looking at that myself. That's a horrible place to.
More culture than recreation.
We're in recreation.
There's a lot of recreation there.
He will be under general operations.
Yeah, that's one I can tell you, that's one of the things noted that will come out of this.
I mean, it's not that big of a deal.
But if you recall, last year's budget said it was WKRP in Cincinnati or something.
Yeah, that would be our care, I think.
So at least you got that part.
Yeah, that's the cable access thing. Will that adjustment be made in this upcoming fiscal year or the following?
For what?
The, the shift in the department D stuff.
No, it'll be in the final.
It'll be in the final fiscal, okay.
Oh, sorry, yes, we're going to.
Yeah, we'll leave that over there.
And Carol, just to, so we kind of mimicked page 34 and 35 off of the audit report too, so that's kind of how they're structured in there. And so we started making notes of different changes that we need to make sure that we make with the auditors as well, so.
Yeah, I noticed that we'll just, that's completely.
Yeah.
It should all be in.
All of the department.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, any questions?
Thank you. You did a great job.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Now we sit and look at Stan for the last 10 minutes.
Bring that in, bathroom.
That's where we'll repeat this.
Yes. Next is my department. There we go. So I think mine's pretty, there's nothing, there's nothing large for mine, but removal of, what? Oh, you're whispering.
No, I didn't say anything.
So we're back to, we're back to page 34. You'll see a large decrease actually, because so many of the things have been taken out of city management budget that was there before. So, and I think even in actuals for '23, '24 included Alex, right?
And HR, yes.
And then also HR is coming out of.
Your final amendment, I want to, we have to go back and get all of those costs for the current fiscal year. the current fiscal year and move them out. So it's, it's better if we take the time this year, it'll be part of your final amendment that we bring in for a quarter, but that way we'll have apples to apples compared to moving forward as opposed to a happier imagine. So, but actual Crystal said, we have to reduce my budget, so I don't.
Put these down.
Yeah.
Isn't this where Nate came out of too, his budget line?
Yes.
Yep, so removal of all the contractual. Yep. I put the note in here that we moved the citywide supplies, so I just wanted to make sure that we had noted that. But we, there is an additional cost in ours. So while the citywide supplies, while we broke it up into all the city hall departments, we kept the paper. So we, my department is ordering all the paper. So you will see a supply line if you're looking at the line item that is quite a, quite a high amount, and that's because we're ordering all. We, we order it in bulk, and it just makes the most sense that way. It's more efficient, it saves us some money, so we kept that in ours. But yeah, the large amount of changes is really a reduction, and that's the reason behind it.
Just a general comment. I like how you have a little slice of the pie chart in the corner.
I just noticed that, you know.
Yeah, I've been, I've been enjoying that. I think it's kind of cool.
Yeah, it's his idea.
Yeah? I think it's effective, though. Just like a you are here.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I totally missed it, but it was, hey, it shows, and you know what, Steve? Next year I'll have to like do a better polling it out so you can see it, because the, when I did the revenue versus expenditure, it showed all departments. This kind of shows like each section. So council, zero percent, I hate polling this.
Literally a rounding error.
And again, I love the discussion, because again, we point out departmental level. Again, that's the board level, and how does, what's the overall impact on the budget? So we could eliminate the entire city council, and that, you know, gets us a.
The president's would have great.
Exactly. So it's great discussion, and it's great to keep that in the back of your mind of, we're only dealing, you know, Stans department for five minutes is great, you know, that's literally all, you know, at your level, that's probably all you, just tell me what's going on, what are we spending our money on, and then move on to the next.
Or, and for when we get to HR, you'll see, that sliver is not a huge one, but for all those people who say we don't need the HR department, what the efficiencies that it delivers to the organization versus what it costs the organization is, I would argue, is easy, easy, that's a no-brainer.
I'm so glad we have that department. It's incredible.
Me too.
If finance gets, how much?
Everyone is happy.
Public safety is happy too.
Yeah. So for your guys' budget, there are just a couple of things that I did want to talk about. So you will notice, A, you'll notice some changes. We moved, there were some things that were in either the citywide budget, that department that we eliminated, or community promotions, that we put into your budget, and they were things like our SEMCONE membership, our NLC membership, MML, things like that. So you will see a slight increase just because of the movement of those memberships that we've always had into your, into your budget. We budgeted, we budgeted conferences and workshops, or what's it called here? Education, is it conferences?
Memberships and, yeah, memberships are doing.
Sorry, I have to.
Meetings and conferences.
Meetings and conferences, yes, sorry. We budgeted basically how we've budgeted in the past for you guys, just so it captured. I have a hard time with the, with like, there wasn't a, the numbers were all over the place over the last couple of years, and I know Mac and I happened last year, but we did budget in a way that, B, you guys have pushed in, like for whatever reason you wanted to pull back on that, you just let us know. With your department, I tend to just say here's all, and you guys can say if you don't, if you don't want it in there. And then on another note, youth assistance and Tri-Community Coalition. So I know this has been a discussion for you guys in the past. Last year, I believe it was last year, youth assistance was pulled out. I have put a thousand dollars for each in here so that you guys can discuss how you want to go forward. If you want to fund neither of them, if you want to fund both of them, but I wanted that to be a discussion for you guys all to move to decide.
Didn't we use some of the opioid money in the past to fund, to refund one of those, I thought?
CDPG.
Is that where it went?
Yeah, enough. Was that what we saw?
No.
And then, then we also the contest we won.
Yeah.
We did.
The voting tank.
We did that too.
Yeah.
Both of us.
What was that charter about?
Oh, wait, CDPG was Haven only? Did it also include?
I think it was even in.
Library, we get the life print books and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the sidewalks.
Accessibility.
Curbs accessibility.
Good, you guys just went your whole side.
But historically, youth assistance was a line item, as was Tri-Community, and I believe they were each five thousand dollars if I'm remembering correctly.
Just tell me if you.
And so then that, you know, when we started scaling back on level of service, you know, those were eliminated. I know that they each received something last year, youth assistance with the voting, the voter challenge, and I don't know anything else. I believe Tri-Community got something.
You know, actually, I don't know if they invoiced or if they had something sent.
What happened with that is Nate was looking into it. On Matt's way out, he only budgeted a thousand. So when the request came in, Nate looked in there and said, Carl, tell me what the budget is, and the budget was a thousand. So I think that historically we got three thousand, and they said, we're here for our three thousand. And Nate said, it's only budgeted a thousand, you know, I'm giving you the thousand, and have a nice day.
So are you asking us right now about those line items?
Yeah, and you don't have to tell. I mean, we have tomorrow too, but before we, it would be, we'll need direction from you before we fine-fice the vote.
Does anyone have any thoughts this evening that they would like to give Ann's direction?
I think it's fine. The only thing is, why only these two organizations? Why not some of the other ones that we also believe strongly in, like Haven or?
Haven gives CDPG money.
What's that?
Haven gets, um.
A thousand or?
Something from CDPG. I don't know the number off the top of my head.
Quite a bit more, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I think we had a resolution.
Yeah, our food grant. Any of the other organizations that come and ask for money, and we tell them no?
I can speak to one of those. So Tri-Community Coalition, I can't really speak to. But the, the youth assistance, and I know this, just for full transparency, I was on the board of Youth Assistance in Oak Park. It's a different.
Wait, youth assistance or Tri-Community? Were you on the board for?
Well, both at one time.
Oh, all right, okay.
But, but youth assistance is a different, so Tri-Community Coalition is just a nonprofit organization that they would argue benefits our community members, like other nonprofits. Youth assistance is a little bit different, in that it is a quasi-co-sponsor relationship. Somewhere down in, somewhere in, I don't know if it's, I don't think there's an ordinance, but I'm sure there's a resolution. So for instance, Oak Park, there's a resolution from the eighties where when the, it's, it's a county-run program, but there is supposed to be a local board in each community or each, each school district. And it's, it's usually a partnership between a cosponsorship of the city and the district to say, we will produce a board and, and support it in some way, and you can, you know, support it in whatever ways you see fit or however you can afford. But it is a little bit different than just a nonprofit. There was at somewhere in our history, I'm sure there's a very similar document, a resolution that says the city of Berkeley will co-sponsor this.
Sorry, what's the word again?
Yeah.
What, do we know how much the school board gives then? Have any?
I don't. We can find out.
I mean, it's a thousand bucks. Like, you're not going to break us. I'm just thinking of the other organizations that come.
Correct. Except that, I will say, youth assistance historically is very, and I'm not saying others are not, roots on the ground, truly intervening with families and providing what I believe to be an important community service. What they do is tangible in the community and the scene. I do know that there are other organizations that, I mean, to your point, the Food Country, I know that they received twenty thousand dollars in operating expenses, and so that they could then focus on fundraising and, and some other things. And we're not saying that we can't revisit, obviously, every year. We could go through who, who we might want to consider. I think, to your point, the origins of youth assistance came the way Crystal has laid out. So I'm very much in support of that, and if we want to talk more about it tomorrow, that's fine too. And if there are other, the other thing too, I think we have to be careful of is that the city is not a, even though we're funding some things that are nonprofit or not for profit, you know, we have to decide where our philanthropy will begin and end. We're not a funding arm for, but it's not to say we can't support something.
Not a foundation.
Correct. So all of that, I think there's a lot of nuance, and to your point, right, consideration perhaps for others. So I don't know. But that was all a lot about, no, I don't think you have any clear direction, however.
Well, my line is the two grands in there. So all we're looking for is, it stays there unless we hear otherwise from you, or if you want it more or less, that's, I guess, the guy that we're looking for. Otherwise, it's there.
Okay.
And, you know. So, so I think it stays there for now, but I think one thing we haven't had is, it's just been a give-me. They haven't presented what, what they're doing, and.
Well, they have though at their breakfast. I mean, we're all.
That group does. That group does.
So I mean.
Yeah, and so, so that's true. So that's true, when I've been to the breakfast, but I mean, it, don't want like a onerous allocation, but just a one or two-page letter that's, you know, what, what, how this money is used, that we can.
Yeah, what exactly does it?
And then we can make that determination.
Wait, timeout. What?
I don't even know Tri-Community. Like, what, who are they? What do they do?
It's been a while since they've come. Not old geezer here, has spent through many of their presentations, but yeah, I mean, they've got to come back and give you the update, yeah. I think it's, you know, if we're going to throw some money at them, the least they can do is give us ten days.
Say thank you.
Okay.
Or make the apps, like.
Yeah.
Home group.
How demand.
So.
To, to Councilmember Henning's point, even like a presentation of council.
Yeah.
They.
About a half hour, like ten minutes.
But I mean, that, I mean, I'm going to say like if we are allocating any budget funds towards outside agencies, that would be an expectation of me as a council member that once a year, we are getting, it doesn't have to be a formal PowerPoint, but someone should be coming at bare minimum during public comment and saying, hey, thank you, this is what we're doing. Reminder, here's how we serve your community so that people are hearing how they can take advantage of it, and here's how we use these funds. And if they can't do that, then I don't feel good about.
Agreed.
Us allocating money in that manner.
To support Justice's point, I mean, most of the time, CD, the, when we're doing CDPG, the Hayden folks have sent us.
Yes, yes.
Right? And I think that's important. It's like, we're about to, to Justice's point, this is scarcity of dollars here, right? And we're choosing to allocate it to what we deem to be a worthy organization that in turn provides benefit back to our community. That's the whole point. And to have somebody there to give us, you know, a couple of minutes of conversation, to put a face to it, and to let us know that this is indeed providing the value back to Berkeley we expected, and of course.
They need to know where their money is.
And, no, circling back to Haven.
I'll give you a update. County restricted the amount of entities you can contribute to from three to two, and Haven was eliminated at the end of twenty twenty-four. So we no longer give them a contribution in the current fiscal year and in the, we only allow two, two entities to be able to contribute to, and so for us, it's the library, the large print, and.
Yard services.
Yard services. They only allow two public services. They used to allow three. The smaller users, they said it's too much work for them to, they have multiple, so they cut them to two. So Haven gets nothing.
This year.
This year and going forward.
Can we spin up one nonprofit whose job is to then distribute it? That's a good one.
And we can discuss that CDPG too, if you guys.
So, what would we give to Haven this year then?
So we didn't, in the current fiscal year.
Right, right.
But that's CDPG.
No, but they won't get anything from.
Correct.
So maybe put Haven instead of Tri-Community, but we don't know. Like, I mean, that's just a thought.
That's my thinking as well.
Haven, we know they come, they're.
We know what they do. I can tell.
Tri-County, I had to look up, or Tri-Community, they work together to reduce substance abuse a lot more. I mean, it's sad that we have to Google what they do, because, yeah, they, they've,
I mean, they've had non-zero present for, they've come, but it's been years and years and years, yeah.
So I would rather see money going, you know, if we can help Haven, who does a lot of Tri-Community.
So are we hearing that's the majority, change the, change the line?
Yes, please.
Yes, Penn?
To keep youth assistance changed, Tri-Community Polish and even.
Yes.
Penn, we're only allowed to give them two. Well, no.
Well, that's one of the.
The two was CDPG.
The two was CDPG, yeah.
So.
Sorry.
Yeah.
We only have two thousand dollars.
Yeah, we only have.
Well, we're choosing to write a two thousand dollars. Yeah, I'm not giving it. I'm not recommending expanding it up.
Well, edit the footnotes of the project thesis.
Hey, Crystal just said, a curiosity, if you don't know the answer, don't worry about it right now, but when we talk about like how we could use those opioid settlement funds, if we were still inclined to revisit the Tri-Community Coalition, is that potentially a way if we wanted to reallocate funds?
No, it, go ahead, sorry.
No, it's okay. Go for it.
Potentially, but I was, I would like to propose utilizing those opioid funds for the core program, the co-responder program, so that public safety has a social worker.
I like that.
Right along. Thank you.
So actually, right now it's a little.
I was just going to say, the chief is the one who ultimately knows the rules, so these are great questions for him tomorrow.
And he.
So we've had that discussion. He has confirmed that opioid funds are, you are able to use them for the co, co-responder. He was at a meeting with Madison Heights, Hazel Park, Firdale, and who's the fourth community?
Royal Oak.
Royal Oak.
Because they even have the therapy law that goes with that.
They share a co-responder. So each community, I think, was putting in sixty thousand dollars. It might be less.
Kind of almost like a mutual aid.
Kind of.
Cool.
Yeah, and it's, that program is set up, so it's, you're meant to join forces and do that. And so, yeah, after, actually, Janice sent Ford in an email to me from a resident that did kind of set up this chain reaction, and so I reached out to Chief. I spoke with Charlie Cavell, who actually was the, I don't know, he was instrumental in the core program. And so we had a lengthy discussion. Chief has also been, like, it's piqued his interest. He's looking into it, and he did confirm that those funds can be used that way. So I sent the contact, Tricia's, Tricia Zazombo is the contact, and I sent her email to Chief, Crystal. Anyway, it's moving along, all that to say.
Okay, well, I derailed us, but.
No, it's good. It's good.
Okay. Thank you.
And you hear about the billions in opioid settlements?
Yeah.
Don't we get like five thousand or something?
Twenty-five thousand, so a little more than that.
But how many years of that?
Well, we've got two years in the past, and it's twenty-nine thousand, four eighty-one, i.e. on your budget amendment coming in the week of today, and then the current year's twenty-one. So we got about fifty-one trillion available, which is about twenty-five billion.
That's sticking out.
Yeah, some, every one of the settlements go to different years, the longest is fifteen. There's seven or eight settlements to date.
So that twenty-five-ish K is that the sum of all of those?
Annual, annual amounts that we'll get for probably, at least for the next five, six years.
That's what I thought. Yeah, I meant annually, yeah.
I think our max is one thirty, a full year.
Yeah, somewhere around there.
And then it will act, so.
But if we, if we try this, the, having a co-responder, will we evaluate a year? How much we use, how effective was it, all those things. And so even if we can take that money and do some bit of supplement from the budget, I think it'll be well worth utilizing and optimizing.
Yeah, and to that point, future councils will probably want to think through this, like if this becomes something that is kind of standard, like we have it year after year, but it's being funded on something that's temporary.
Right.
Right, we'll have to just to think about and position it to, to be carried, presumably with your general fund or something like that on its own, because the sort, funding source will dry up, but the need will continue.
In the initial, there was grant funding initially, and that is also, but it was our money that was used to distribute grants, and that, that's gone now too. So, anyway.
This slide has gone now too.
The last thing to note is just that you guys will see an increase in your budget, a one-time increase in your budget. That's recommended for seventy thousand in twenty-six, twenty-seven, and that's in response to the strategic plan process. So I don't have much to go off of. I threw it out to a couple people and, and got a range of numbers. Some of them were shockingly high.
Yeah.
And I hope that when we put the RRP out, they're a little bit lower, but, but it is to note that twenty, and we, we made sure to put it in the notes this way too, so any community members who are looking.
So, any community members who are looking at it, understand the breakdown of this cost. Twenty thousand of it is a community survey. So, if we're going to do a statistically valid community survey, which I think we should, included in the strategic plan process, that's a large chunk of money just on its own. And so.
It is broken out in the.
Yes, it's broken out in the notes. It's fifty for the, for our facilitator, and then twenty for the, for the.
I think it's in the notes.
Yes, it is.
Especially with Royal's recent change. Does it council budget, right?
I'm, I'm the consent agenda.
So, any other questions? We will, we'll, we'll make the changes that you guys noted, so.
Knowing that what they're trying to do.
Um, next is legal. This shouldn't, we, we kind of budgeted just based on right now, current rates. You see, we went up, we went up a little bit, one-fifty, one-sixty-five, and one-sixty-five, assuming that, well, we know that the RRP that we will get back will, will have us spending more than we are currently. But just so you know, in the, you'll see that there are three different line items. There is our labor attorney fees, which we pay. We don't pay a retainer, because we just don't use him that much. We pay him per hourly. You'll see activity around right now more than ever, because we're doing negotiations. But other than that, he's been very, he's been instrumental. Jess can, can lean on him for questions, especially during the transition that's recently happened with HR. And then we have our primary attorney fees. Obviously, Dan Crist's office handles prosecution in general city. We also employ or pay a copy trademark.
Oh.
So, just so, as a note, I came in and went, what is this? Why are we paying them? But I have found it is, it is necessary for us to keep copyright and trademarks on some of our, on our seal and, and some of our branding materials. But we're being very diligent about what they would like us to copyright, quite a few things, and we are not going to do that, because it all carries a cost with.
Of course.
It carries a cost each time we meet with them. It carries a cost when, just for them to hold the trademark and the copyright for us. But it is necessary, but I'm trying to limit just how much we, we utilize that. Go ahead.
Is it necessary to keep them to hold the copyright? Because, once we have the copyright, we have the copyright.
Well, I think it's the payment of the copyright itself. And then they handle, from my understanding, they handle when somebody, if someone is to use it, which has happened to us before.
Yes.
Then they're the ones who automatically kind of.
Could, but could you hire them as needed when that happens?
Like with your A.D.R.
Yes, and I believe that's what, I'll look, I'll make sure and I'll look at the cost, but I believe that that is what our costs are. We don't, so we don't pay them necessarily to carry it, but we just care, we, there is a cost for us carrying the copyright, which gets included in that budget line item, yeah. And then if there's a phone call about it, which I'm trying to.
Yep.
And then general liability. So, that's anything covered by MML. On our general liability pool, they assign attorneys to handle some of those claims, to handle those claims for us. And so, we always budget just based on the last, what, three years of activities that we've generally looked back at. So, that's what we see there.
Imagine, I just got a MML board update yesterday that included that they're seeing large increases in the number of claims and expect that rates are going to go up.
Wow.
Well, of course, rates are always gonna go up.
In, a specific area or just across the board?
Um, it was, uh, it's off my head, it was like, you know, police kind of things.
Oh, did they say sidewalk at all?
Uh, they didn't break it down to that kind of detail, but just general and also like sort of police kind of things.
Thank you.
Any questions on the nickel? We went through the slide, please. So, CDVG, this year, as Carl has already stated, they've said that we can only, there are only two groups that we can give them to. So, it came down to large print, Brooks, the library, and then also our, continuing our yard services. And then the rest of that money, traditionally, and there's actually a general item on Monday's council meeting, traditionally, we have grouped together, which we can do a couple of years to, to get some of those larger projects done, which have been historically been architectural barriers. And Sean can have it expanded, and then I can watch.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of ADA ramps, not what you're gonna see coming out this community park. Corrections and family issues, moving some work in the corner, or being in Oxford, the corners. That varies depending as far as ADA, this client's. Two phases, so it'll probably be multiple years this year and next year, trying to utilize its full funds. We will have to give in some road funding from the ADA walk, but maximize that, that project and utilize all its funds. It's kind of a trading part, I guess. Yeah, with a small portion. But if you want to make sure you're maximizing all the CDVG funds that are.
Yeah.
We don't get a lot, so it's hard to find how to use that really. But it's good and bad. We don't have any, like, shaded areas or disadvantaged areas. So, other communities, for instance, if they do have shaded areas, can use it for code enforcement. So, if you've ever heard of any of the communities using CDVG funding for, to help fund their code enforcement, they can do that, because they have a shaded area, and they say, oh, this code officer handles this section of the city. Well, we don't, we don't have that. So, we have been very creative about how we, how we utilize that.
Probably the reason why we group it two or three years at a time.
Yeah.
There's so many steps involved in CDVG projects compared to our normal project. The cost.
Right.
The cost benefit, you need two or three years of money to test it out.
To do anything.
Yeah, like having an environmental done, Davis Bacon pricing, or.
Yeah.
It's all federal money, so.
So, is this the federal government that cut down to two options to use, or is this county?
No, I don't know.
We are a pass-through of Open County. They're the ones.
Open County had it. So, what is, what are the, explain to me what the, why they limited it, why they cut it back to three to two?
Administrative burden on there. So, if you're gonna have ten projects and two grand apiece, that's not what they want.
Got it. Okay. Okay, thank you.
So, the project Sean's talking about, just FYI, we got about three years' worth of unspent CDVG funds, hundred thousand dollars-ish. So, again, a substantial project on there that will catch us all up. And then all, all we can expect is about thirty-five-ish going forward. Again, that's based on history. That's awarded annually, so who, who the heck knows what's going on?
Right. And no, no pie slice.
Yes, so.
It's zero.
Sorry. It's its own fund. It's on page forty-two in the budget book. And then if you're in the line item, it's Fund Two-seventy-five. If you're in the line item, it's one-thirty-eight. But budget book is page forty-two, so it's its own fund. This is the, and I hope I'm not making a liar of myself, but this is the only fund outside of the general fund tonight that we're really talking about.
What page is on that budget by the time?
Forty.
Forty-two.
I think it's door, it's the. The entryway of public safety, by the ADA corners.
Yeah.
A lot of those, like, bumpy.
Yeah. That's the warning.
They don't challenge traffic.
They don't, they don't challenge traffic.
So, there were identified some.
She told me that. Every single one I look, where is it?
There were identified some potential ADA issues in silly buildings, even in the non-public parts. Is this money that can go towards that?
I think any ADA. But I think a lot in the facilities were, they were suggesting ADA analysis done.
Right.
Would we have kind of said anything, if we ever did an improvement to any of the buildings, it kind of comes with, like, it's like hand in hand. So, but to your question, I think we probably could use this funding to do, like, to do an alignment, like, if we were to do a study with them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm actually not suggesting we do those studies. I don't think, I don't think that's, prudent spend of money right now. But if we're doing one of those projects and it includes ADA.
If we could use it, so, that portion.
I've seen them on the outsides, but I've never seen them on the insides. But it makes sense. So, we have them.
I think it's gotta be a public facing.
Yeah, because then the community's like, do we have to do the jobs or something? Do we do?
You mean, Santa Rosa was Libra?
It was, yeah, it wasn't, I don't think.
It wasn't.
No.
There's so much.
It was.
Yeah. The other piece is that it can be more expensive sometimes, so we have to wait certain times. But, yeah, I think it's what, anything outside of public facing.
You know, I, so I'm gonna say, it's all that, we're getting down a pattern of doing it well with crosswalks and how to afford that and getting the paperwork down. And it's so onerous to figure something else out. Let's just.
Keep with what works.
Keep doing what you know will work.
Until we run out of money. Or CDVG just stops.
Happy day.
Don't joke.
No, it's federal. Okay. Our new departments.
Ten minutes ahead of schedule.
If at any point you guys want a break to go to the bathroom, just let us know. Is that right now, or you want to keep hovering? May I also suggest that we just go as needed, since there's only one to begin with. Break is not.
There's one downstairs too, for the record.
I tried to stay off.
We're very careful.
As much as possible, so.
The facility assessment said it's not as bad as you think.
You have it in your folder or something?
I always.
Which replaced H.I.
Molly has had it.
It does warm in here. Anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, where is it? Okay.
What happened?
I don't know.
Oh, it's automated. Oh, so it gets warmer in the U.S.A.
All right, HR, we're on page thirty-four, the fourth item down, a one-hundred percent increase in our costs.
Carl, did you, did you say you wanted to amend this year's budget so that won't be zero?
Yes. For the fourth quarter, I will be moving Alex's salary and HR's out of sitting in, or into their department, so that we have a better.
Yes, makes sense.
Historical representation.
On our next week.
No, not on next week's one, but on the fourth quarter, yep. Before the end of the fiscal year, we're moving on. We've already started moving, if you see the fourth, the quarterly amendment, you'll see that there's expenses, no budgets for those two items on the quarterly report, because we've already started things behind the scenes, but we'll have a formal amendment coming.
And that won't change the bottom line of this year, but it will just change how it's represented.
It'll be a one-to-one move, yes.
But she'll still get her paper through.
Yeah.
Yes, exactly.
Depends, it depends. I think I just used our whole budget on these. Sorry, go ahead.
Nope, you're all.
Oh, this is thirty, sorry. This is budget, or Department Two-seventy, and it's on thirty-four. Did you say that? Sorry. So, I don't have too many line items, but one that I specifically wanted to break out was our advertising budget, and that's the recruitment. So, specifically, I like to use the open press and MML. So, I adopted, or I budgeted for four open press, thirty-day postings, and five MML, thirty-day postings. MML was buy for, get one free. So, it's a good deal. What's great about open press is they distribute it not just through the newspaper, but through like all of those job boards and job sites. So, whenever we're struggling, that's sort of what I reach out to. Uh, we also have our professional development budget, which is the largest section. So, that has ten thousand allocated towards citywide training. Oakland County actually provides many options for training. And Crystal and I will obviously start developing more formal training plans, but this will really start to get us on track, especially with some of our, like, supervisory and management roles, really get them the training that they need to develop those leadership and communication skills. Any other, we still got, you know, Gallagher as our contractual services. They help us with open enrollment, benefits, all of that. There are onboarding supplies, our nameplates, all that good stuff.
Carl's pages in.
On the line items is page thirty-seven.
And it is worth just, and sorry, I meant to tell you I expanded on that. I threw her a curveball.
Yeah.
We are, so obviously Jess has been here for how long, so?
Three months.
Three?
Yeah.
So, she's still, as we, we talked about this when she started in, in the interviews, and I think I've talked to all of you about this, kind of the way that we're looking at, she's really still getting her bearings on just making sure that we have a functional HR function. And so, I mean, recruitment right now, how many positions do we have open that you're?
Eight active and more coming.
Yes. So, as a department of one, she's handling quite a bit with just the kind of, I say rudimentary, but, you know, just the basics.
Foundational.
Yeah, the foundational. And, and so, at the same time, we're trying to put in efficiencies to our processes and things like that. But what we would like to get to is where we're looking, where we've kind of got that stuff in place, and, and I'd say, well, not that it won't always take time, but a kind of well-oiled machine. And then her and I together can work on more of like the organizational, a, as an organization, how can we lift everybody up, and a strategy for that, and organizational development strategy, engagement with staff and things like that. So, in future years, you may see us asking for increases that coordinate with, with those types of things. For now, we put a pretty lump sum in there for organizational, just citywide training, really. And that's what we're calling it. But we want to do this in a more robust and thoughtful way. We're still, we're a little ways from laying that out. But she's hit the ground running pretty quickly and pretty good, so, thank you, Jess.
Thanks, Jess.
You guys are letting her off easy.
I know.
Well, we, less than one percent of the budget.
I do look forward to seeing how that development plan develops. Obviously, I love where your focus is currently focused. And I'm looking forward to seeing, as you have a chance to breathe and kind of develop the career progression, kinds of things. I think that stuff is awesome. It helps show our, our employees that they have, you know, ways to continue their growing. Super exciting times ahead of this department.
And I just, I'll add that I was very grateful to add your position. I know that it's been a struggle prior to coming. And not only a struggle, but I think there was, no, no one is an expert in it. You know what I mean? You are, that's why there are HR professionals, right? So, asking directors to take on yet another thing definitely will force them. You know, everybody wants to do the right thing, but when your play is already broken, and something added that you're not even trained to do, it creates more stress and certainly yet another hurdle. So, I'm just grateful that, that HR study was dusted off, and we created this position, and we have you here now. And I know, I'm hearing from various departments that they're very happy to have you, and you've made a positive impact, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Too much to ask.
Okay, thank you, Jess.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up. Welcome.
Thirty-three minutes ahead of schedule.
Ooh.
Look for time clock. Give me three minutes.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So, um, just a quick, and sorry, Carl, if you want to expand on this too. In the budget book, this is going to be page thirty-five, right?
Thirty-four is inspections and.
Oh, sorry, yeah. And if you're in the line item, the planning department, seven-oh-one, is on page, page sixty-seven, and the building department is page, is department seven-forty-five. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but inspection is building, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so sorry for the confusion in the wording, but in the budget book, it's called inspections every day in the, in the building department.
Again, we're changing it to building as of this second, so. Does that make it more clear, correct?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. We control this, so we're all good. We're all good. Don't let those accounting people. All right, it is done.
Take it away, Crystal. Okay, so I have two funds. Since we're sticking with highlights, I'm gonna stick with highlights, and you guys will know if you want to get into some of the details. Um, I'll start with planning. You'll notice contractual services, I'm asking for a little bit more of this year. One of the things we have to do, and I know I keep saying we're almost done with RRC, but I promise we're almost done with RRC. And one of the last things that we have to do is economic development strategy. It's not something I feel I have the expertise for. And it is kind of fortuitous timing, because it's something Crystal's mentioned a few times, but we're trying to get more into, particularly her and I. So, with this particular document, we would come up with incentive, and be interested in pursuing ways to attract people to the community, both businesses and potential developers for residences, and also have an overview of different programs that the state can offer, and other things that we'll be able to look at in terms of ground up building, things like that. So, so ways that we can incentivize people to come here. And also, we have to identify a couple of priority sites as part of that. And those priority sites get have some to RRC, and they shop those across as well.
When you say priority site, you mean something to be developed, something that's been?
Yes, so what comes to mind is hard fields.
Oh, yeah.
But we have the opportunity to identify two or three, and then DC will help shop those around first. So, that would be part of the economic development strategy.
Once we have a strategy in place, do we have people with the skills and time to execute it?
So, I think that that's a skill set I could try to build on. It's not definitely the place that. It's not definitely the place that I come from, but it's very planning adjacent. And I do think, once we have a strategy in place and the connection between our building with the county and with the MEDC and the local institute too, that, yes, we could implement that strategy.
Okay, so I don't, don't deny your ability to learn that. Do you also have the time to do that?
Yes, so now that there's only one, it's just done.
It's a whole new world then.
This is kind of the next phase, right? We set the stage and now we have to get the people to come to the play and see what we have to offer. Um, so yeah, I think I would have that.
And the DVA could.
The DVA is also adjacent, right? There's certain opportunities to promote, not, given their, their scope is a portion of the city, not as a town. They can certainly learn the muscle and the guidance and set patterns and help with that too. So I'm looking forward to that partnership, is it a false, as long?
Yes.
Unless we hire someone. Jennifer's doing great, so.
She is, she is doing good. Um, you'll also notice in planning that the consulting budget's been reduced. The past two years, we had twenty-four thousand, most of it went up to ten. That's based on what we've used. We are going to tap, are allowed to help us implement a few things in the zoning ordinance. But after that, I see us mainly relying on that for more complicated tax amendments or policies that need to be drafted on an as-needed basis. They do plan reviews, second reviews for our larger products, but those are really passing costs right now that are not reflected here to present an escrow account. And we collect money from applicant and then pay them on that escrow account. So this would be more policies and tax amendments.
I have a question, backing up to redevelopment ready.
Yes.
What exactly are the last, are there ten last things?
No, no, there are not ten last things. I can tell you exactly what there is.
Okay, great.
The economic development strategy. We have, uh, like the matrix talking about implementation of the master plan, which I literally just had to put together for eighty percent there, which is great. Um, and they just want to report on that every year, so that I'm sure with you guys when I get that together. We have, uh, internal development process flowcharts, which Kim is working on, those are almost done. We have, uh, marketing. Before they called it a marketing, I think it was policy, it was like documents or something like that. They've been a little bit more flexible with that recently. So I think right now, what we're really set on that, I can pull some things from the website, if they're interested in making sure we have branding documents, we have, so that should.
So just little?
It's, this is the last big item.
Okay.
And the only other outstanding item is the development guide, which Kim and I have been drafting and kind of seventy-five percent of the way there on that. So this is the last big item, besides the zoning ordinance, which we just did.
Okay.
What is that, you want to?
It opens up additional grant funding that we can access. It also, one of the bigger things is having MEDC shop around these development sites for us.
And it signifies that we're ready, like, here we are, we've accomplished these things, we're serious about economic development. And to, to everyone.
But even without that certification, the things that they're estimating to do, some of them, like this marketing strategy is kind of like, okay, well, here it is. But most of them are things that we really, yeah, they are things that we should have.
Sure, sure.
Even if we didn't have that to reach for, yeah, most of these things are worth reaching.
And plenty of.
I can do a bunch of my kid up with a dang popcorn bag.
And you're trying to be so quiet, it just opens the bag.
Anyway, thank you.
And now we're behind schedule.
And talking about priority sites, one I thought of recently was, um, there's a lot of different, PNC Bank. So they have that humongous unused parking lot. Now, there are a number of other existing storefronts there that aren't the bank, but I think that bank building is probably mostly empty and a giant parking lot that they don't choose.
Correct.
Yeah, that's a very good suggestion. Any other questions on planning? Okay, building is pretty much status quo. There were a couple of things that were added. One, I was, I was going to get a hotspot and a laptop for Steve Stover, our new building coordinator, who's just been retired.
Oh, good.
Awesome. Um, but then it was pointed out to me that a cellular laptop would actually be a lot of hassle. So we're going to ask for a cellular laptop. This would allow him to be out in the field and enter notes and violations and things right there. Right now, the process is, he is somewhere, passes a house and has a violation, let's say. Especially since he's new, he doesn't own the past history, he has to call Angela, hook up her computer.
Because she doesn't have anything else to do?
Yes, so she releases that information back to him, it's just really not an efficient system. So this would greatly improve that. I also separated contractual inspections out from code enforcement. There were some questions earlier this year about how much code enforcement, we're really, how much we're really paying for code enforcement. The way the mechanic contract is structured, they get a hundred percent of our trade inspections. So that goes to them and that's what they get for providing all of our specialty inspectors, mechanical, etc. We pay, they get fifteen percent of our billing revenues. And that includes most things, but not every single item. Uh, so by putting that fifteen percent in a separate account, that's really what we're paying for code enforcement. They get a hundred percent of our trades, that fifteen percent covers code enforcement, they don't get charged specifically for something called code enforcement. That would give us a way to figure out if we were to have our own code enforcement in-house, this is how we could restructure our contract and this is how much will be gone.
Is it, is it correct though to say that any like increase in the expenditure means there's an increase in the revenue on the upper side?
Yes.
Or bringing in higher revenue, then we're just paying them more, but it's always going to be offset.
Though he might, well, though he's doing the same amount.
Yes. Right, so there might be years that we have, we have less revenue, right? So in that case, we're getting a little bit extra. The way that we try to operate, especially with fees and things too, is at all, we try to have it evened out in that. Some years are going to be high, some years are going to be low. If we can establish a baseline, maybe it gives us a better idea and a more informed position to negotiate it.
So Steve is new code boarder, like he works for McKenna?
Yes, he works for McKenna, um, but he's here, you know.
Assigned to us?
Yes, he's assigned to us, so he sits here, he has a desk just like a regular employee.
But he gets paid for them now?
He gets paid.
Will they buy him the computer to use or no?
No.
I mean, this is important.
Probably, because those are all my systems.
They will not do that right in Stanford, since it's a competitive to be a student and all.
And if we ever brought it back in the house. And it, I like the way, yeah. And the looks from the line item were, we're spending sixty thousand dollars on that. I'm on page seventy-one, top of page seventy-one on the line by line.
Yes, so sixty thousand dollars based on, I tried to go through the past bills and break it out, so we have a starting point.
That's our best.
Yes. Yep.
Looks like it seems like a deal.
Yeah.
It does seem like a deal, right? And, and to Crystal's point, he's been killing it. He's just, he's, he's going to be very proactive and very responsive and really wants to work with people through their issues and is a problem solver. It's a, everyone loves conflict, right? So this is too trained to conflict.
And what, oh.
Emily is the building official.
Building, okay.
So when you said that McKenna gets a hundred percent of trade inspections? And they go through us, like the papers, so to have those inspections, the builder or resident calls the city hall. So I kind of, I bristle when I hear that because are we making covering costs through fees, like permitting fees, like?
Yeah, so they get a hundred percent of our trade inspections, we have permitting fees.
Okay, so that's how the city, on the city side?
Yes.
Because I just don't want us to be losing costs, you know, there are, when I have my store, somebody uses a credit card. Yeah, I'm absorbing those fees, I shouldn't be losing those fees, you know, so it's, just I think in terms of, as long as it's leveling out somewhere else. Okay, thank you.
And the lawsuits are popping up all over the place, that's the next hot one. A building, yeah, exactly, are the fees set sufficiently? If you're making a dollar a profit, everybody suing everybody. Somebody, the communities with larger, um, development going on are being sued by the ambulance chasers.
Of course.
The same ones that suit everybody for
Water.
The water, exactly.
Thank you.
We just went through every building fee last year, prepared it around, so don't worry.
Now I kind of.
That doesn't prevent someone from trying.
Correct.
But I feel pretty good about staying there. Oh, and then the last item, um, in the CIP, there's a new vehicle for Emily, our building official. The one she's driving right now, Sean can probably talk about it a little bit more, but it's an old police car.
I'm sweet.
It's broken down a time or two, it's in rough shape.
Does it have the flames, is that the one?
No, not so. What we've done is, we've taken the, we've taken the best of the worst, as far as public safety, when they're done with them. And tried to roll them in the code enforcement or city hall car, their reason.
Yes.
You know, it doesn't pay off, if they had to go rescue Emily, I think twice now, just from how it broke down.
And then you have to keep putting money into something that's.
Into a car that should be gone.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is, we found the cheapest car we could find that would be dependable. Put in CIP one this year and then one as a general city hall backup.
Okay.
Car in the following year, both, both both, you know. We haven't had a, a new city hall car or a new building permit car in twenty years.
Wow.
It's always coming out of you now, which is.
Which is fine, but if it's becoming problematic, then it's not fine.
You look at the cost of ownership year over year.
Yeah.
Buying that newer vehicle where you have like five years and then you resell at the end or something, whatever your life is going to be. The maintenance costs we're putting in trying to keep the local cars running is higher than the original cost to do that.
I said eight, four, five. Crystal?
Alright, any other questions for Crystal?
You guys weigh too much.
No, just, just to note with the CIP items, we are trying to get them, they will largely come tomorrow.
Okay.
Just by the very nature of, of this guy's department. But we are trying to just cover everything, especially in this next year. Not trying, we will cover everything in this next year, just in the departments they land in, but just largely they will end up in tomorrow's presentation.
Hey, hello everyone. Alright, so not too many changes this year for communications, but I am very excited to add an intern this year. I'm here something that has been sorely needed. I felt very stretching capacity in my time here, so very excited to have them and they'll help us be more proactive with our communications. Maybe working with the different departments to provide some more educational campaigns rather than just always, you know, trying to be reactive or just getting things out as fast as we can. Ultimately, down the line, I am hoping to add a part-time or full-time staff member to my team, but I think with this intern, this will be a great start to see what we can do with some increased capacity. Um, and the funding for that is going to come out of my contractual services budget, which a lot of that has gone to Sable PR, who's a PR firm that we kind of use to fill the gaps. But ultimately, down the line, that budget would shrink and then the budget to hire someone else would fill up. So that is the main change that I'm looking forward to this year. Um, and then I think Crystal mentioned this earlier, but we have eliminated community promotions from the budget overall, just because it was kind of creating redundancies with different line items that are also in other departments. Um, so the line items in the budgets for postage, printing, mailing, and then for advertising have been moved to the communications department. And just an example, the postage line item is used for things like these lovely postcards, where we kind of put some information about a service that we're offering and then more in-depth information on the back. We have spent four of those this fiscal year and it has seemed to really help people understand what's happening around the city. So we've cut out the perkside lead collection postcard, this yard waste and chipper postcard, as well as postcards to promote our winter and spring/summer program rates. And then the professional development budget has increased a bit, just to cover the cost of joining some networking organizations and then attendance at the government social media conference. So I'm looking forward to attending the government social media conference next year. I think that, as we all know, social media is an incredible tool to get information out there and understand the pulse of the community, but I also think that there's a lot to learn with it. And so this conference is the biggest and best in the whole world, which is kind of crazy. So it'll be nice to meet other municipal communications professionals and just learn some more best practices, see what other folks are doing, things like that. Um, I'll also, I'm planning on joining Infora, which is a guest organization that will collect me with other local leaders in southeast Michigan. So I'll be able to network more with other communities as well there. Does anyone have any questions? I think I read through that one fast.
I think it's, it's important to note, um, a lot of the increase that you'll see in her budget is from moving the inter-community promotions over. So where it may look like new line items, it's like the Berkeley Buzz, for instance, was in community promotions prior to, that's thirty thousand dollars. And so if you want to speak to the survey and Berkeley Buzz in the future, could you just put it in here?
Yeah, sure, so I'm planning on, now that budget is almost kind of to the finish line, I'm planning on running a community-wide survey because it's been a while since we've done one of those to understand how people like to receive information from us. And then that will also kind of help me understand if the Berkeley Buzz is a priority this upcoming fiscal year or not, because I think we discussed this last year as well, it's very expensive to produce. And I just don't have a good read on how helpful it is to our community. And that was one thing that I caught back this year, and so we did the programming guides instead of the library and park, so our creation group together to make those. But having that money budgeted for the Berkeley Buzz is important because I may find that people really would like to see it back or that maybe it could be used for other current communications that are similar, but maybe not quite as expansive. Um, and the community survey, I'm really looking forward to, I'm planning on setting off the table at different businesses around the community to try to catch some of those folks that we don't get from. So I'll be at the grocery store, I'll be at the recreation center, just places that I think that people in our community go who might not be the most into our channels that we already have.
Anybody asked about the Berkeley Buzz? Because they didn't go out at all, right?
I have had three phone calls this entire fiscal year about it and when I kind of explained the rationale behind it, everyone understood. And having that program guide that the library, the parks and rep put out, has been really helpful because people just still want to know what they can sign up for.
Yep.
And then this is, um, just in the budget packet, um, she's also under recreation and culture?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get rid of that for recreation culture and stuff.
The only thing that should belong into there is library and perks and rep, but our perks and rep fund is in a, so that's what the, so how they got their head.
So we'll change that for the, the final, uh, publish.
And then, I know when you joined, we dumped a whole bunch of responsibility on you that you weren't expecting, so I appreciate you sticking with it and that we can, that you some hope.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Fantastic.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to seeing how helpful having an intern will be, looking forward to giving this opportunity to a student. I think it'll be great.
Do you have one already selected?
No, I have three applications so far. So if anyone knows any communications students at the undergraduate or graduate level, please send them my way, I'd be really happy to welcome them.
And I think it's, it's a good opportunity to just take this, take this chance to, to talk about how great the budget document is that she put together. They put together alongside Amy and they didn't have a lot of time. We kind of sat down a couple of times and said, here's what we were hoping for, we looked at different communities' budgets based on some of the feedback that we had received. And I said, can you guys please? And, and they did, and I think, like we've said, they already have ideas for how we could expand it in the, in the future, but I just think they took it and ran it. I was really impressed with some of the, if you look at this digitally, how it links back to things, it's really helpful. And so just a, just a great job.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks so much to Amy, I think she did.
Yes, Amy, you ran herself into the bracket.
Yes, it was great. Very nice.
I was dumb.
The only thing I have is that the picture with Scott on it, a former employee of ours?
Oh.
On page nine.
Oh, the strategic plan?
Yes, strategic framework, that's Scott, he puts records in there.
I did not realize that.
Oh, the background I've taken, no, I didn't realize that.
I was thinking he was just a resident, but I will change that.
He was not a resident.
It's nine.
My apologies for that.
No, no, no. It's a great picture.
Thought it was a big, bagged an hour photo with like.
It's a great picture, but as soon as I thought I was.
Not trying to go full any feathers with that one, but yes, I have plenty to discuss.
But now you can test your Photoshop skills to put like Groucho Marx or something like.
That was on my face.
Put Dan there instead. That was the only thing, yeah, that's a very easy reading idea.
Good, I'm glad it was helpful for everyone, that was our goal.
Oh, most.
Because you have to work.
Yes.
Give a lot of context, make it easier to understand.
Yeah, well, it's cool, not only does it help us navigate the process, but also for the residents and the folks that are interested in this kind of stuff, right? To glaze it all out, you know, I think the more that we can. I think the more that we can explain things in clearer English, you know, better.
I completely agree.
And this is a significant step forward.
I'm not a big budget financial person, so I feel like I'm a good, I'm a good gauge if I can explain something in a way that I understand that I'm on a good path to helping other people who...
So congratulations to both of you.
Thank you. Yeah, and I just wanted to say, like, so this is now my fourth budget. And the first one I sat through involved Matt dropping off like three-inch binders at our house of just the line items with pretty much a good luck, have fun. And that was the budget process. And we would go through, and I remember just my mind like literally melting out my ears as just like we would go through every single line of the budget. And at the end, you still really had no big picture of what was happening other than, you know, credits and debits. And to see how it's come like the incremental changes like Carl, some of the ones that you implemented when you came on and just how it's now, where like this is just barely even a reference. And I agree, like that's how it should be for us. And that these are the tools, it's, I don't have nearly the headache and stress and dread of this.
That's great. That's cool.
Yes, exactly. Yeah.
And that's...
Come along, Wick.
This is, we still say this is like living, breathing, active. Yes, you know, it can grow. So any feedback that you have, we've noticed some change we want to make for the final draft. So even like small changes, and I've done this, it's been really helpful in finding some of the things that we need to change for this draft, but even if you can think, oh, if you would have shown this this way, there's quite a few infographic type of things that Amy and Caitlin identified that didn't make it in here just because of time's sake. There's already a growth that you'll see next year. But if you have other things that you're thinking of, just let us know because then we'll work on getting it there next year.
Maybe we worked my budget back here. It was 30 pages less.
Sorry, that's not a great habit.
All right, any other questions for...
And the thing I'm most proud about this budget? We didn't have to buy the $30,000 software that Dave was trying to survive. I just said, tell us what we want, and then as Crystal said, these guys will do it.
We did borrow from a couple other communities and we kind of went through theirs.
High form of flatter.
Yep.
No, I'm very glad, to your point. I was advocating for a different format because to Jess's point, what we had was painful. And when I was looking at other communities, I think it was Rochester, Rochester Hills, I looked at Brighton, you know, because Nate sent me the link. Well, take a look at this. And then I looked at, oh wow, this is what it could be. And so we got the Carl version and I'm good with that.
Yeah, I love it.
You know, so, and, you know, again, a team effort. So thank you all. And it is way better and I look forward to the changes that you're going to continue to make as we move forward and you'll say, oh, we see this, or oh, what about this? And so that's the beauty of having a living document too. You can make those adjustments as you go.
Yeah, and to Bridget's point also, like by saving that $30,000, like I think that's being good stewards to the residents' tax dollars. Like they're constantly looking at us, like where can you save money? Like, why are you doing these things this way? But like to be able to say like, no, we were looking at these options and they're like rolling up our sleeves, you guys were able to do this and make these improvements and not have those expenditures. I think that really is worth my thinking, guys.
Thank you.
And those interactive environments are really cool because they, like the clear dove and the open dove, because you can like click into things and it is really neat. But we're hoping that we can expand on, that's where I was really impressed with Caitlin's, like, oh, we can click into this. We can, we can try to achieve that in the like... The two-way version.
For the size of our city.
Yes, exactly.
That type of expenditure doesn't make as much sense. When you're in a much larger municipality where you probably need those click downs, that makes sense. For us, this feels appropriate.
Yeah. Yeah. And we'll continue to look for ways that we can like make it interactive and user-friendly.
To me, it's all about exactly what you talked about. It's just, tell me the overviews, tell me the highlights that I want to hear. Page 34 through 50 are the only thing that's required. To use all the rest of the pages for that kind of stuff, you know. So give me the graphs, give me the comparisons, give me the, tell me what's going on.
Because, because Shami, because Shami.
Exactly, yeah, exactly. Literally nobody, we used to get the budget award this year, we opted not to because our budget document is 200 pages long, but it was still painful for everybody to read because there was all that required, like the county word crap that had to be in there to get the award. So who cares? So we literally lopped off another 100 pages and went along this format of what do our residents want to hear? You know, we used to do that and then we used to publish a 25-page. Here's the version that a normal person could read. So he said, why are we doing that? Let's just make it one. And when I saw the final product of this, you know, that to me was the start of that. It's just like, you know, no one cares about 34 and 50 except for me. But everybody else, you know, just tell me what's going on and tell me I'm not going broke.
We may or may not have used.
Yes, not always.
Maybe you know where you are.
Yeah, this fell through a time, time whirl.
Yeah, nobody knows where it's at there. It's on their website.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Where do you start?
I'm hoping by June at the latest, we have the applications closing for the beginning of May.
And that's because there was quite a bit of saying that was in our, so there's not an amendment that will come with that or you lied to the money that was contracted services that just haven't been used this year. So we said we could start the...
Yeah, I am very excited. It's going to be, it's going to be great. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Who's counting?
Okay, the numbers guy.
You're all back in.
Do you need anything?
No, thanks. I mean...
What do you want?
The library is on, they'll correct. It's also on page 35 in the budget book. And if you are following along the line item, they are 72 and it's apartment 790.
All right.
Good enough.
Hi.
Nice to see you.
So pretty consistent budget for the library from previous years. I think it's worth mentioning, no changes in public hours and no changes in staffing levels. In terms of projects that we have been looking at for the upcoming fiscal year, we've pushed a couple of them off. So the copier replacement and beautiful straight-up chairs, we're going to hold off on that. The copier we own, we've not had to call service on it for a while, so we're just paying the, you know, the small fee for the use of it. So that's been great. On this current fiscal year, we replaced our security camera system. So like the brains of the security camera system. And the next phase of this project will be replacing all of the cameras throughout the building so that we can get the greatest benefit from this new system. So we got the same system, but they use a public safety and they have a PPW. So eventually, public safety will be able to tap right into that and see what's happening at the library. So we kind of wanted to standardize that so that all the systems would eventually join. In the upcoming fiscal year, we'd also be looking to do all of the cable runs at once rather than as we replace the cameras. So we'll use the cabling person for the stuff with PPW and city hall for a lot of projects. So that'll save us as well.
Yes.
So then, in the next couple of fiscal years, we'll just find the cameras and have them installed there. The most exciting thing for the upcoming year is the addition of two study rooms at the library. So that is the number one request that people come in and ask, where's your study room? And we have a large meeting room, as you're aware.
Yes.
Sometimes we split it in half, have that open to quiet study. A lot of times those being used by outside groups, library programs, events, things like that.
Dogs.
Dogs. Exactly. So it'll be really nice to have the two study rooms built into the existing space. I don't have the visual to show you, but it's going to create two study rooms, tables and chairs and each, so we could actually have up to four in each room. And the way it's going to divide up the existing space, we'll be able to create like a quiet study area. Because right now in the main part of the building is just big and open. If someone's talking over here, it really carries. So we'll also have the sightlines throughout, so we'll still be able to monitor and everything. So I think for our slice of the pie there, we're impacting a lot of people in the community providing good level of service. So, I'd answer any questions.
Well, you know how much we love the library.
Thank you.
I mean, like I have, you know, my interest, I've always been a reader, but my interest has been kind of reignited beyond my brain some. I mean, every Thursday, Baby, I want to go to your library.
Love that.
And he's like stays, like we closed it down last week. My claim to fame, I don't close down a bar anymore, but I have closed out a bar. So I just am so appreciative of all the things you offer and the things that you continue to do to be the incredible community asset that you are. And so, you know, if people are wanting those, because if Anderson did ask me, Baby, why isn't quiet in here? Because people are working.
Yes.
Oh, you know, he's got pretty much one volume, but...
It's about the whisper is louder.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, but I just, I look at, you know, and I know this is going to be like me picking a favorite child, but I just think that all the things that you offer to the community and beyond, it's just, your reach is incredible and you really try and, you know, have something for everyone. And not in a watered-down, oh, well, kind of way. It's very purposeful and thoughtful. And I think a lot of your programming is driven by users and that's important. And you can see it. And I can see it in your staff when I come in and, you know, they're just, they help me pick out books for, you know, Marky's Reading Month, and they were excited about it. Like, and it's just a great feeling all the way around. So thank you for all of that.
Thank you.
Yeah, so...
Are we looking at any time in the future to bring back the hours that we had to cut? Or is that going to take a milage to place that?
I have two comments and I'll start it off by saying, my first meeting, so I try to meet with all the directors. God, I tried, I met with all the directors at first. And I just have to say, I'm very impressed with Matt. He has a head about him that is, that is operationally inclined. He's very thoughtful and skillful in what he does in the library, but also it's, you could probably get my job. And I would say that about a couple of directors here, but just Matt was very, and part of that, we had a discussion right away about what was taken back and what could be added. And right now, we have a balanced budget and any additions would, we would either have to pull from something or we would need those milage rates that we looked at earlier. We'd have to roll them up in order to absorb any more costs from the library, which would include additional, additional hours and everything that was lost prior to. And so Matt and I did talk through that quite a bit. And part, we're working on a strategy for largely what we can do with the community. A larger, a larger picture ask for the community and what makes sense for them. And I think the library is a coveted asset of this community. So I think it would be part of anything if we were to go back to, out to the voters and ask them, ready, they would include additions to the library. And I have full faith in Matt that he would provide programs that would really answer their calls because he's just, his head is just great. He has a great head for the library and for his operations in general. And I think responding to what people want and understanding what they want and taking the time to understand that and then to pass that on to his staff, so...
I guess I'd add on to that sentiment, in addition to the things that we need here in our community, we're getting, we're seeing changes from the federal level, right? Some of the cuts and the deprioritization of things and the way you've been navigating that and doing the best for Berkeley given the, you know, the additional hands that keep getting tied behind our back here. I'm going to applaud you for that and continue to provide the best services that we can, knowing that, you know, what we thought was something we could count on, may not be so. Appreciate everything you're doing to ride those waves calmly and provide the upside of it.
And that's a great point, that even more things are being taken over.
Exactly, yep.
I did have a question about the study room. Will they replace the meeting room or will it just be half of it? Or I think like a transfer, like a convertible space? It's going to be in the main part. So we'll basically lose some seating there. The back side? I got this clear. Yeah, it's about, I was just wondering where it's going. Yeah, it's about two-thirds of the way back. So we'll have like a pocket. We tied it in so that it'll come out from where the windows are. And it'll be aligned with the fireplace, so I don't have...
No, no, in my head, I can picture it.
So we tried to kind of mirror that chunk of space.
Like with the seed library.
Yeah, it'll be kind of one bay down from that.
Perfect.
Yeah.
And to add to the quiet spaces you were talking about, I think, so I was in the library, Matt was showing me this and I was like, what a great idea. I would love this. But not putting them flush with the west, east wall, right? More to...
Right.
But leaving some space at the end for like quiet, because like you said, it breaks up the space and I thought that was great, yeah. Because I didn't, yeah, it's a big, wide, wide open space right now. So that will kind of be smack in the middle, which will create a...
Just to quickly expand on Crystal's point as well. Most of my clients I've seen through the years has a dedicated library. You can let it be up to a certain amount. Because what happens is, what happens when times get tough? Public safety is number one, recreation and library are the ones that suck. You know, and without that guaranteed resource, your hours were cut, you know, that kind of stuff because of the general fund. And to your point, if it's truly that important to the community, you know, carving that out, you know, is important. And again, if that's dedicated to the library and the library's pulled out of the general fund with a dedicated resource, then, you know, it opens up resources in the general fund as well. But again, the importance there is dedicated to the library itself. And again, they set their budgets based on the revenue that comes in. And property taxes go up every year quickly. You know, and if that's the case, they have additional resources to continue to, you know, fund the...
And just to give a quick kind of comparison, right now the library's at, not that large of a chunk, but 600,000, 700, 70, six, here's 78,000, or 670,000. And one mil right now brings us, what, 820? 820?
Yeah, just look at the library. Yeah, I think it's about that.
So just as a comparison, if we were to, yes, yeah. As it stands now, we'd have to look back at if we were to expand hours and whatnot. It would be right around a mil.
We also have to figure in that mil we put down. So you've got to, you've got to over, you have to...
Kind of overshoot it, yeah.
It's easy stuff. You know, here's what it's for, it goes in its own fund. And, you know, for the community to see it, there's where it is and what we think it's used for.
Another 674 financing something.
With the fire truck.
Or...
Yeah.
That wraps.
And water.
More water. You might need two. Yeah, right. One of the others.
Thanks, Matt.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
One hour, Chris.
Crusher's all on you.
Yeah.
Watch them both until 10 o'clock.
This was a mistake, we left them with two hours.
Well, I've already got plans on where I'm going to get, I'm going to get out for, you know me, I talk for a hundred dollars.
Yes.
That's a concern. Yeah, it should be. So finance and treasury. Part of the increase in the current fiscal year is again moving stuff around. So I believe we moved, I'm trying to find our department here real fast. We moved the utilities in from 265 to the tune of $40,000. I'm sorry, wrong. To the tune of $40,000.
Hold on, real quick, sorry. If you're on the line item, finance is department 191 and they're on page 13. And then treasury will be page 28 in their department 253. And if you're looking at the budget book itself, it's all on page 34. Thank you. Sorry.
So a lot of the increase you see there is we moved liability insurance out of department 265 in here. That's about $44,000. We moved the utilities out of 265. Again, this is, you know, the citywide utilities for electricity and all of those kind of things. Again, this is, you know, the citywide utilities for electricity and all of those kind of things. They come to us, we just code them and, you know, and charge them. So, no need to allocate them to all the different places. So, again, we're the ones that do all the work out of them, so might as well just put them in our department there. So, those two things, fully staffed, there were some increase in staffing costs. They had to pay a little more to get quality individuals to fill our positions.
Hooray.
Yay.
Yeah, exactly. And well worth it. And then the other big piece that we have in here is the assessing contract. So, I don't know if you've heard the rumors that are out there really, you know, about just doubling their cost.
Yeah, I mean, you know, once in a while.
And their current budgeted cost is 132,000. So, doubling it is just another 130, 140. The reality is, there are third parties out there contractually that can do it for about what we're paying. So, what was put in the budget is that estimated cost, obviously, we'll have to adjust. We're going to, we're throwing together RFPs very quickly and intend to get those out in the next couple of weeks just to see what we can get from out there. But there are several companies out there that do this contractually and would be at our price and might even be a little less.
So, when I...
So, just a little bit, with every municipality in the county probably going up a bit, are there going to be enough people to do it? And is that going to drive up, you know, their costs that they charge?
I don't think it's, it's a lot of small ones, you know, so...
I think there were 32. They have 32 in the county.
Oh, 32 under, go to the county.
But they're small.
Yeah, there's a lot of small ones. We would be, I was at Pontiac, they used to do Pontiac as well when I was out there. And they, literally, the reason that we left them is, we think charges $200,000 a year. And then one year, they did this exact same thing. It's that, by the way, we wanted to get out of the business. So, it's 400 next year.
That's what it seems like that is.
Yeah, it's what it truly is, so... We'll have to see. I know a lot of people out there and there's a, there's one large company out there that does like 40 or 50 of them already. You know, and again, a lot of times with these companies, we can work with them. So, like at Oak Park, we hired a company there and we said, "We don't necessarily need you here every single day. We don't need a body sitting there." Because again, so you do it a little less for us. You come in four days a week or three days a week. Highland Park, we use the same company. They come in one day a week for four hours just to pick up the homestead, property tax, affidavits and that kind of stuff. But they do all of it remotely. The, hey, I want to call somebody, just like we use right now for the county. They call their offices directly and those kind of things. So, they're out there. I don't think, because this is very quick. I don't think it'll drive up the prices short term because I know a lot of those companies that are out there are always looking to expand and those kind of things. So, all in all, there's less assessors out there. There's a high demand for assessing. And there's not a lot of individuals that are out there. That's why these contractual companies are going out there. But I think we'll be successful.
That's your assessment, Charlie.
That's my assessment of assessment.
We're assessing the situation.
Yeah, exactly. But it's one of those, and if we do take over our own assessing or contract it out, that's another great opportunity to perhaps bring treasury, the tax function back in-house as well. So, not many do, you know, the county doesn't do a whole lot of that. I've only done one other community I've worked for that actually use the county to do, you know, their property taxes and those kind of things, so...
So, when I was talking to Charlie about the program, I also brought up, and he's like, "Oh, I thought that's why you were calling additionally." He was asked, he was going to ask for a six-month pause. Do you know if that happened?
I have not heard of it.
Okay. And he also cautioned me that, "Well, when you put out your RFP," because I know you guys will, "make sure that, you know, you might get a teaser price and then, and also look at the hourly." Like, he was selling it, which, fine, and I thanked him and appreciated those things. But I do think that if he had, if they were able to say like, "Okay, we're going to just hit the pause button," that would be, because they also did this rate during budget season.
It's horrible, Charlie.
Which they knew.
It's horrible.
Oh, well. And if they were getting out of the business, like I remember when Plant Moran was like, "We're not doing municipal audits anymore." They were just open about it and here's a list of, you know, some firms that you might want to check out. So, I don't know, if the county doesn't want to do it, I don't know why they just don't say, "We don't want to do this anymore." But, you know, they might be just saying it in a different way. So, who knows, but...
While we're sort of on this point, I wouldn't mind if we got out of the business of collecting tax for other entities. Because they look at that entire tax bill and say, "It's the city."
Yeah, you know, like the school district and stuff like that.
In the county.
The county, yeah.
Remember, we get 1% of their fee as an administrative fee, so it's all worth collecting their taxes.
Okay.
What you, what you'll like, though, is in most of my budget documents, I put, there's, it's called the dollars on it.
Yes, I love that slide.
It has the dollar on it that says, "25% of what you pay comes to us."
That will be in the presentation.
75% of it goes to everybody else.
Ian, can it go on a website somewhere that, you know, "Oh, by the way..."
Start with that.
Yeah, can we have it printed and just posted on City Hall?
Like, we can fix the wall with a vinyl.
Oh, yeah. Literally, I think in Noby, I put that dollar on the back of the tax bill.
Yeah, I was going to say, put that tax bill, we charge the county.
What do you mean, does it have a tax bill?
Get it out there.
Well, the...
Bump our rates.
Oh, no, you know that they're controlling that rate, so...
Yeah, yeah. That's the only downfall. But again, to me, that is part of, at the budget session, at every time we can, it is, we're setting the millage rates. But just FYI, the dollar should be the background. I think we're going to wallpaper City Hall behind you guys. It just has the dollar up there, so... Because, yeah, everywhere, everybody, you know, it's, the taxes are tied, it's all your fault.
We've talked, Crystal, having the dollar mill.
Is there a, is there a prescribed format to the tax bill? Or can it be like, your city portion is, you're the rest of, you're paying everyone else?
No, the little box, as far as listing all the millage rates and stuff, that's, that's pretty fixed. You know, but the, like, we control hours, we control, you know, what is, you can put little messages, you know, they're, they're standard size. So, you have to fit in there what you ultimately want to do. So, we go through redesigns, we change colors on them in some places, you know, each year, so that...
Well, it's new then.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. And it helps us with, some people come in to try to pay last year's taxes. You know, if they're paying them here, we know that color is last year's tax. And you have to go to the county and pay that.
A little heart tag.
Yeah. So, it's, it's stuff like that where we do control and can do that kind of stuff, so... Yeah, outside of that, let's say, finance is boring. We don't do anything but screw around. While we have a salary, the printing and mailing, again, that is from 265, so...
Oh, okay.
That is moved in there, yeah. So, that's part of the major increase, 15 grand of the postage. So, that is the postage machine. That is the general stuff. Just like city manager kept the, the paper purchases, we basically took the, anything that's not allocated to one of the other funds, just kind of just dumped into a single line. Membership of dues, auditing services, the consultant, that's pretty much the actuaries for our OPEB. We have to get the annual actuary reports related to the audit for that. The contract assessing services, again, the contract accounting, remember, we historically, we had plants, we had the contract finance for a while, we had, I think I was there for a few months as well, you know. So, all of that should, we had, we used the payroll person and a part-time accountant during our vacancies. So, all of that should be gone, you know, all of that's going to be removed. The only thing we have is the audit or the actuary dues. And like I said, we moved liability insurance in and utilities from 265. And if you happen to be looking in the notes, which I strongly encourage you don't, you know, it says in there, "Move from Department 265, move to Department," you know, it's that.
Okay.
We don't want you to go in that.
It is worth noting that the last couple of years compared to this year is going to be a little bit long because there's been so much movement in both where things are, like the departments, but also in, when you like look at contractual services, because there was so much transition in the finance department for a couple of years. So, it'll be a little bit until you see like a comparison, comparison, comparison. Carl, will you take the time to talk about investment strategy? Because that's been a question. I think it's good to talk about right now.
Certainly. We'd like to make money.
Yeah.
No. So, the overall investment strategy is handled by, has been handled by Congress. Historically, I see that handled by Treasury. So, like, Noby, I oversee $130 million annually, call them or not. We set the investment policy. The state of Michigan has numerous acts that say, "You can't invest in anything where there's risk of losing friends here." So, that restricts us to mutual funds and CDs and money markets and commercial paper and agencies and all of those kind of things. So, all of those kind of things, we can invest in. So, what I do is annually look, and again, the great thing is, I do it for a whole lot of places, so I, you know, what's out there. But it's really just, especially with our general operating money, there's only so many things you could do. So, like, historically, Michigan class, I don't know if you've heard of that, their investments rate sucked for years, again, counting, sorry, for years and years and years. And then they finally hired investment managers there. And now they're one of the highest rates of returns around. The county investment pool, they were doing great for a while, but then they bought a whole lot of long-term investments. And then COVID hit and the markets dropped, you know, the interest rates dropped to 1%. Then they bought 1% instruments for three, four, five years. And now, when interest rates skyrocket back up, they're stuck with 1% return. So, the returns on that one bottomed out. So, everybody left that. So, our role is really, number one, and I, my deputies usually cringe because I like to keep like no money in the checkbook, you know. So, how much is the county payable around? It's a hundred thou-, you know, it's 200,000. I'm going to move 220,000 over there and that's it, you know, and keep the rest moving and look at it every single day. Because you can make, interest rates now are still 4.4 a quarter, you know, for the money. So, moving in and out of there on a daily basis is very beneficial to us. And that's why historically, you'll see in the budget, like this budget document, our returns have been great. You know, the new president came in and said, "We're going to cut, you know, interest rates are going to cut six times in the next, you know, six months or whatever." Didn't happen. We had two rate cuts and they're not going anywhere anytime soon. So, the good thing is that they're still up there at that 4% condition. So, we're going to earn 4% of our money where, as it was two years ago, we were earning 1%. So, that's what we do with that. On the OPEB side, just like pensions, we can invest in anything we want. But we've chosen to dump it all into markets. And so, we, they have a standard pool. Any money that goes over there is just invested according to the way they invest in every other city's OPEB money that they're holding. So, we opted to go with them, so they do 100% of it for us. And then obviously, on the pension side, we have the pension board who oversees all of those assets. So, you guys appoint them and they are the fiduciaries, i.e. trustees, that oversee that. And they hire the investment managers who are doing exactly the same thing that I would do as far as investing in those kind of things. But the pension investments are totally unrestricted. You can invest anything you want, stocks, bonds, whatever else, crazy stuff. I used to own the mature pension plan. They used to buy cougarans and, you know, they build buildings for physicians and stuff. There's 10% of it could be getting literally anything. You know, it's crazy. When they have 10 billions and billions and billions, you know, they get crazy stuff. But that's what that board does. So, that's why it's important that, you know, we, you as the fiduciary, appoint the right people and at least keep a thumb on you. And we help you keep a thumb on them, you know, to see things going the right way. They hire professionals who ultimately do it. You just got to watch, I've seen places before, that whoever bought them the nicest dinner, that's who they hired was the professional. So, you know, those kind of, who bought their fundraiser ticket, so... Again, no indication of that here, but, you know, that's the, when you control your own pension and your own board, you just have to, you know, be on the up and up. And they're supposed to be fiduciaries, looking out for our best. And we just need to make sure they do so. Way more than you ever want to know about investments.
So, they do over, like you keep it around?
On the board, yes. Exactly, yes. Because again, I know, two of my other communities, they have boards similar to the one we have here. And so, again, I know what their returns are. Yeah, I guess I'm ticking on the board now too. So, I'm one of those shady people, though, too. But, yeah, it's, I know what the returns are. I know what the industry's doing. So, if we're not performing up to that, that's when, you know, I raise the question, so...
I get their minutes, so, you know, I watch them and occasionally. Specifically on the public safety pension, you know, you had shared that it's based on a 7% return assumption right now, which I don't think is realistic in the next. So, are we going to be reevaluating that?
So, let's, let's start from the beginning. Pension funds are not required budgetary funds. You know, so it could be zero, you know, it doesn't matter. So, how I historically budget those is, the actuary report says it assumes a rate of return. So, it assumes the long-term rate of return is the 7%, and actually, that should be going down because it'll end up at six in the next three, four, five years. But that being the case, there's going to be years where you're 20% and there's going to be years that you're negative 20. You know, so what happens is, we tend not to be that active because, number one, it's not required. Number two, even if you guys say, "I want better returns," the answer is, "Okay, that's nice." So, if you want a 5% assumption in there, great, we'll lower it to 5% or whatever. But to match what the actuaries are saying and to set our expectations that our investment managers are meeting it, that's why I budget that. I take their reserves times the 7% and that's what the net earnings should be.
And I have a question, specifically with pensions with public safety. That's not going to affect our general fund, right? It's just going to affect the millage.
Right, so if your investment managers stink, if you had a common term, and you're not getting the rate of return, it impacts ultimately the millage rate we would love. So, if we have great years, if we earn 20% each of the next couple of years, we're going to see that millage rate go down. I forget what our funding level is. That's usually, I haven't memorized. I thought it was 60, 70, somewhere in there. So, we're still in that. We need growth phase for that. You know, if you're up 80, 90%, that's where you actually want to be more conservative, less volatility in there. But here, you're going to be 70, 30 stocks versus bond ratio. And so, you're going to have those big ups and big downs. So, to your point, we can make it whatever we want, you know, it's, it's a non-budgetary fund, you know, but that's, I tend to try to match with the actuaries.
So, I would, in normal circumstances, which we're not in, I would say, you just follow the historic, you know, fundamentals and that assume things are going to, you know, things go down, things come back up. But the fundamentals have changed from under us. And I just think we need to be aware of that and cognizant and monitor this, you know, that, you know, what we're protecting, 7% returns for, you know, the long-term, may not be the case.
And the other side of that too... Okay, yeah. And the other side of that too, though, is they use what's called a five-year smoothing. So, even when you have those bad years, it's not going to impact your contribution rate immediately. Because if you lose 20% in one year, they're going to spread that over five years. And if you gain 20% in one year, they're going to spread it over five years. So, they don't want your contribution to be going like this. So, our taxes are five mils one year and one mil the next or whatever. So, even if we have those bad years and don't realize it, if you are concerned about the actual results, I will make sure that I include those quarterly. So, when I do quarterly budget amendments, I'm like, "What's the priority?" The fund that doesn't require to be funded and we just get the numbers from the actuary. I don't aggressively amend that, but I can make sure I amend it quarterly, so you can see what it is.
So, I think my, my request, my request on councils is, you know, at this point, no changes, but watch us carefully because I think things are changing and just going to be fundamentally different going forward.
And that is, I consider that my role as well, you know, to warn you or to educate you and warn you, "Hey, we're down 20%, this is going to impact the millage rate." How, you know, so be ready for that, that kind of stuff, so, yeah. Definitely make sure you learn that.
What percentage of our investments are still with the LGFD?
About 20,000, I think.
Oh, hardly any.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that the only one?
Say, pull those suckers out immediately. They were paying 2% to 3%, I was getting 4% to 5%, so... Love you county, but not that much.
Right, good. Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they're not happy with being working in a week, I hope, between a lot of clients. Yeah, it just, should be 80 million.
Now, they're rating our assessing here. Thanks a lot.
It's all your fault.
They all work together, Ross.
Okay, so, any other questions, comments?
Yeah, on the treasury side, there's literally nothing. There's literally no changes, just inflationary increases. I mean, just nothing else.
So, status quo. So, we'll take up, so tomorrow, we'll largely be looking at the other funds and not so much the general fund. We covered that tonight. We covered that tonight. Um, so if you have any follow-up questions that you want us to cover about the general fund that we didn't really cover tonight, go, you know, please feel free. Um, I was going to put on here, um, just a, and maybe I'll just throw it on there tomorrow and take one. But just revenue over the years, because somebody had asked about this and I apologize if I remember what it was. But revenue over the years and how much it's, it's, how much we've seen increase. Um, and you'll see that our increases are never, they're minimal as far as revenue goes up. And when I say minimal, I just mean in, when you compare it to, um, our expenditures. And then there's a little, there's a little in there because of our funds, but so that's, you know. But maybe I'll bring that in tomorrow, but I, somebody had asked me, so I apologize, I didn't get it in here. Um, but we wanted to provide mostly an overview tonight of general funds. I know there are some questions out there, some, from some of you, so we'll get those all answered tomorrow. A lot of them had to do with some of the special funds that we'll, we'll cover in tomorrow, so we figured we'd wait. But we'll cover water, sewer, solid waste, major roads, and so a lot of the CIP items are in there as well. For the CIP items, the CIP is a six-year plan, but we only budget for three years. So you'll notice year six is like eleven. But Carl has brought, I think we've really refined in the CIP process this year. Um, and not to get too ahead of us, but you'll see, um, this year, everyone who had a CIP request submitted a form. We'll, um, we'll continue to refine that next year too. That really provided the backup information that you find in the budget document, but we'll continue to expand on that. Sean and I were kind of talking a little bit about that earlier. So we're finding ways that we can continue to expand that information. Um, but to note, Carl did a really good job at telling everybody, okay, so this is basically how much you can assume every year that we're going to have from the general fund to spend on CIP items and the water sewer fund, just in solid ways and et cetera. So I think, and Sean can probably speak to this, but it's set a good, it'll change a little bit every year, but just to at least give a guideline for how much we can afford in the current environment, right? And that's where it'll really lead our discussions for how we want to strategize in the future. If we want to do over and above what we're doing right now, operationally and capital expenditure wise.
It's on page thirty-one, we'll touch a little bit more on it, but it's shocking how little, yeah, the general fund, so.
I'm not sure if this is possible in the time available between to make, or one thing I find useful, comparing revenue to buying power, which isn't necessarily expenditures, because we really buy what we can. But it's, you know, how much of salaries increased, how much has inflation, particularly construction costs, because that drives, you know, that often, helps cases general inflation.
Forty percent.
So, so, you know, that gives, you know, this, you know, okay, last year we got a dollar. This year we get a dollar ten, but everything costs a dollar fifty now. So, you know, so it shows that, that revenue is not increasing to our costs, to our actual costs.
You'll see that in some of the CIP when we get into the detail too. So it was, we want to do locker rooms for public safety. Well, yet last year was estimated at one oh five, now it's at one seventy. Can't, can't do it now. The road projects, they were at three million, they're now at three million six, three million seven, you know, those kind of things. The water sewer lines, you know, so a lot of it, we'll be talking about tomorrow, we, that'll be like six hours, I'm imagining that. But you'll see a lot of those things there where a year ago it was budgeted at X and now, you know, it's not a inflationary increase, it's a significant double-digit increase.
And I can tell you during our CIP sessions, this was a big topic of discussion, because anything we're pushing down, we know it's getting more expensive. So it's part of the discussion, but we're trying to prioritize what's most needed in the community based on our own, you know, priorities and then also the facilities assessment and all, all the things that we need to be keeping in mind and the replacement value. And I won't get ahead of us, but, um, but always it's, okay, we just pushed that down here, we just added X amount to it. So it's a hard puzzle to piece together.
And the form she's talking about too for the request, we've actually included escalators in there too as well. So we need to make it four. If it doesn't come this year, we'll put a multiplier there for how much more it will cost you in future years.
Right, because it's not, just curious. We spoke to some partners.
No need to repeat.
Whatever they are, right?
The shoulders are generous.
They have our name on the top of them, so life is good, so.
Yep, I changed the logo. It was ours the whole time. Yep. They're copying us one.
Okay, well, thank you everyone for all the work. Wait, I'm sorry.
Just emotion, it sounded like.
Yeah. For all your hard work on this, Matt. Thank you, last director standing, thank you. And we look forward to tomorrow and all that Matt will bring. May have a moment of support. Maybe they come from the lake or with support from home, from Patterson. Can we all in favor?
Yep.
All in favor? Any opposed to think so?